Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, October 19th, 2015 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. And at this time, would you please join Troop 383? They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
This time, Ms. Williams will lead us in the vision and the mission statement of the Omaha Public Schools.
The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
With that, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Wayne.
Williams.
Present.
Five present.
Thank you. I know Mr. Snow's here, because I've seen him. I have received information from Mr. Wayne and Ms. America that they have work commitments this evening, so if someone would like to, I would entertain a motion to excuse them for their work commitments.
So moved.
So motion from Mr. Scanlon. Is there a second?
Second.
A second for Ms. Williams to excuse Mr. Wayne and Ms. America from the board meeting this evening. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America, I'm sorry, Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Five.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to the school spotlight, and we have Mr. Andrews here.
Madam President, thank you. Good evening to everyone. Special honor tonight. Between North and Central, OPS had five AP National Scholars in 2015. Four of them were seniors last semester, so they're in college now. One is a senior now. He's with us tonight with his family. I believe we have representatives from Central joining us perhaps later. We have representatives from North right now, so please join in welcoming Derek Chu, his family, and representatives from North to the dais.
Thank you. I'm Derek. This is my family, my brother Darrell, my mom, and my dad.
So often, that doesn't happen until your senior years. This is pretty monumental for you to have received this honor as a junior. I've gotten to watch you since you were much smaller, from Buffett on up, and so it's pretty exciting for me to be able to see the accomplishments that you've had, and that's quite an achievement. How many tests did you take? Because you have to score a four or five, right?
Yeah.
How many did it take to become a National Merit?
It takes eight.
Eight, okay. So you've already taken, prior to your senior year, eight AP courses that you've scored either a four or a five on. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That's awesome. Do you have anything you want to share, words of wisdom with all of us or with students?
It's really fun to take these AP tests to prepare for them. I had a friend two years back who also did the same thing, reached National AP Scholar as a junior, and I wanted to at least match that, just see if I could try and beat him. It's a running competition within all of our groups.
Okay. Well, so are you gunning for State AP Scholar?
I'll try.
All right. Well, good luck to you on that one. We wish you all the best on that. Does anyone have, Mr. Scanlon has a question for you.
Just a question. Luanne said you went to Buffett Middle School?
Yes.
And what made you choose North?
Um...
Other than the principal?
(Laughter) Mr. Haynes wants to be part of it.
I'm asking if there's certain programs there that interested you to attend North?
It started at the math competitions. Back then, there was a middle school math contest. We went down to North, and Mr. Haynes introduced us to things at North. In addition, there was a lot of science involved, the physics first program, so that was something major that I'd liked, that I went into.
Thank you. I just, North is our STEM magnet, and I think that's probably what helped attract you.
Yeah.
What was your favorite AP test? Because you said you had fun taking them, which I don't know that everyone would say.
I really like the physics AP tests.
Okay.
The Physics B1, it really does a lot of, it takes a lot of preparation for it, since it's almost a two-year course, and it is now. There's a lot of curriculum that you have to get in, and it's very rewarding for doing well on that test.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Evans.
Well, first, just want to congratulate you on the great honor, but also to your mom and dad, because I recognize that you've had a lot of support for the successes you're having here today, and of course, the staff from North High, including our principal who's here with us tonight, but the rest of the staff, so congratulations to all of them. And you know, I did have a chance to meet your brother, and he said he may break your record on his AP score, so how do you feel about that?
Just got to take more AP tests.
Well, thank you so much for being here, and congratulations, and good luck as you take on more AP tests, and hopefully we'll see you back as a State AP Scholar.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, brother man. Thank you. And Madam President, pleased the Board of Central is joining us now. They had one AP Scholar, and they graduated in the spring of '15, so on his behalf, Mr. Scott Wilson is here from Central to talk more about that. If we please honor him, or welcome him to the podium.
Thank you for having me. Since we had 43 AP Scholars this year, of course, we have one of the oldest AP programs in the country that started in the 1950s, so we're very proud of our scholars. I know North High is of their scholars, too, so.
Did you say 43?
Forty-three AP Scholars, 25 Scholars, six with honors, 12 with distinction. Of course, we had a National Scholar, too, like North High in there.
Oh, that's awesome.
Terrific.
Very, very good. And I think it's true that the class that you teach, AP US History?
Yes.
That your students did extremely well this past...
We had a very good year, all threes and fives.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
4.5 average overall, which is really tremendous. They did a great job.
Yeah.
And of course, one of them was our National Scholar as well, so.
All right. That's pretty impressive. That's a hard test to take, and...
It sure is.
And they did well, so thank you very much. Thank you for all the work that you do in providing an education to our kids as well.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to hand out a document that highlights two of our students that received the Exarban Horatio Alger Career Scholarship, Javier Perez Rondo and Natalia Miller. Kind of nice articles that describe a little bit about what they're going to do with the career scholarship, and what it means to not only them as students, but also what this scholarship is going to mean for the young people across OPS. I know we've talked about it before, and hopefully in the future, we can have a student come and talk about what this scholarship has meant, but these two articles give a great description of what this new Exarban Horatio Alger Scholarship means, and the connection with Metro College, and then the ongoing connection with UNO or UNL. But it's a pretty powerful piece of support that our young people have here. A hundred and, I believe it was 180 scholarships were given out this last year, and the long-term picture is 500 scholarships for this metro area, so it's pretty powerful for our young people. The next thing I wanted to highlight for the Board is just a document that came from students at Bryan High School, and you've each got at your place. It's called Coming to America. Really neat stories from young people who have moved here from Nepal, Somalia, Mexico, Myanmar, but it's their own personal stories and journeys as ELL 3, 4 students, and I was just moved when I read it at a function I was speaking at and thought you might enjoy the handwritten articles from our students. And also, I wanted to take this opportunity, shifting gears, to invite you all to the groundbreaking for the 75 North Project on Friday. I believe it's at 9:00. I'll confirm that, but I believe it's at 9:00 at the construction that's going on right over there by Kennedy Elementary. And lastly, I wanted to identify some recognition given to one of our staff members, Ms. Tammy Yarman, who was identified as one of the 13 national award winners for the Director of Nutrition Services, so Tammy Yarman, congratulations for your service. Some of the big things that this district's done. Is Tammy here? Oh, yes, she is. Can you stand up, Tammy? Make sure everybody sees you. Thank you. Some of the things that we're doing here that not other districts provide is, for example, breakfast for all. All of our students receive breakfast. There's no pay for any student, and the Grab and Go program that Tammy's been really a driver for, that's supported by Conagra, and I've been told that that will continue regardless of where the headquarters is. The Grab and Go program, which has been just wildly successful and continues to grow, so thank you for your work, and I know we're continuing to figure out new ways to provide new options for our young people, and Tammy and I have been talking quite about that here recently, too, so thank you for that work, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any Board member reports, any events, or Mrs. Fay?
Thank you. I have several things. First of all, let's see, last Friday, along with quite a few people from Curriculum and Instruction, we attended the Phoenix Academy Scholarship Luncheon that was honoring someone who's been a partner of this district for a long time, which is Michael Yanni. But the keynote speaker, Joanne Deek, really was one, like many of you, I go to a lot of these types of events and hear a lot of keynote speakers. She was really one of the bests that I've heard in a long time, wouldn't you say, Dr. Kerberg? And I think it's really important, that partnership that OPS has with places like the Phoenix Academy, and what we can do for each other. It's good to continue to foster those relationships and learn from each other and support each other, so it was great to see a lot of OPS people there and to hear such a great speaker. Then on Saturday, I went to the Collective for Youth Lights After School Program. I think I've gone every year. This is the third year, Lights On After School. That makes more sense. And again, great turnout from the district, you know, all those are OPS programs, those Collective for Youth programs, and Donna Dobson was there, and both McMillan and Lewis and Clark were honored, it was McMillan and Lewis and Clark that were honored for their after-school program, so that was really neat. And then last week, I attended Northwest High School, had a master class that was a part of the Omaha Performing Arts Theater Program, and a working Broadway actor came and did a master class with theater students at Northwest and just had them up there doing improv and giving them notes, and it was really, it was on the news, so you may have caught it on the news, but it was really, one of the highlights of my week last week was to go and see kids get really fired up under the guidance of a professional working actor, and that was really great. So I want to thank Omaha Performing Arts for the opportunity that was provided for Northwest students. And then the last thing I have, and I'll pass this around, one of the graduates of Central High School a few years ago, September Siemens, did as her senior project in college, she put together this magazine called Disability: A Publication for Families Celebrating Abilities Because Disability Doesn't Mean Inability, and this is in doctor's offices all over, and September put this whole magazine together, and it's just kind of a neat thing to see where our graduates go and what they do with what they learn, I mean, obviously in college, but with a good foundation from high school. So I'll pass this around and let you look at it. I do want it back, though, and I just, you know, I'm really proud of our graduates and, you know, what they accomplished, so this is from September Siemens, who, Central High grad. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I had the opportunity to present at the Empowerment Network African American Leadership Conference with Mr. Evans, Mr. Luwaru, and Mr. Corner, and just wanted to thank them for stepping up and being a part of this. I see John from the State Board is out there, and he was there as well. But really, it's great to be able to share the amazing work that we've done, and also talk about the growth that we are still looking for in the areas of improvement. And so just, really, it's really a blessing to be able to go out and talk about those areas, and I know that we had one of the tougher sessions. It was very long, and we actually went over our time, but it was so awesome to see how our community is engaged in what we're doing, and really hearing their voice. This is kind of our second session that we've done at a conference with the Empowerment Network, and it's really amazing just to see that people are really interested in what we're doing here at the Board Table in the district, so I just wanted to thank Mr. Evans, Mr. Luwaru, and Mr. Corner for taking time out of their day to present with us, and we will continue to present this information. We were asked very specific things about the North Omaha community, and so we're actually looking to continue to present this information to this particular group, and so any other groups that are out there that are looking for us to present, please let us know, because that is truly what we should be doing, is talking with our constituency and our community. And then I also was able to go to one of the Goodwill Open Houses on 72nd and Ames. I wanted to give a shout-out to Dr. Kerberg and Mr. Evans. They both attended, and we talked a lot about the different programs that Goodwill has for our young and our disabled students. And on a personal note, I just want to thank everyone who has reached out, and really given my family just a hug and some love and some encouraging words on what happened with my son. We did a news story, and it was really to promote, you know, it truly doesn't matter what our faces look like. These are young people that are in our homes and across our community, but I just really wanted to take a personal moment to thank everyone for the emails, the texts, the phone calls, and all of those who really stepped up to support my young man, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other? Mr. Vargas?
Thank you. President Gadding. So a couple of updates. I had the opportunity to speak as part of My Brothers Keeper Initiative. We had a conversation at University of Nebraska Omaha, and it was just a great conversation talking about film and how this applies to our work in Omaha. Great panelists, great participants, and I think it was the beginning of a strong conversation. We are a partner of My Brothers Keeper, Omaha Public Schools is, so seeing that commitment is fantastic. And for people that don't know what this initiative is, initiative that was, began with President Obama to focus on the disparities and the inequities for our boys of color across the United States, and it's not meant to be a separate, right now, it's its own separate nonprofit entity, but it's not meant to create something new. You wouldn't be creating a My Brothers Keeper nonprofit. The goal is to combine and be strategic around the existing initiatives that are doing this amazing work in urban cities across the nation, and to make sure you're thinking very long, you know, strategic plan, long-term, in the way that we are with our strategic plan, but for a city. And so it's a great initiative, great work, and I was happy to be part of the panel. I also did, had an opportunity, Mr. Evans, Superintendent Evans mentioned this, around the scholarship winners. The Exarban Foundation yesterday was honoring those students. It was great to see so many students that were graduates of OPS and are now, you know, pursuing careers, and specifically pursuing careers even going to metro and other different avenues, and it's just amazing to see the work that they're doing, and the amazing commitment from the community to throw back their support for all the students and their families, and the Yanni family also for supporting that as well. Tomorrow morning at 5:00 AM, I'm flying out to go to the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute is having a public policy conference, and so I'm going as representative of the NALEO, which is the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, particularly to brush up on some public policy conversations having to do with STEM, early childhood, financial aid, and other public policy conversations, and we talk about, you know, Dreamers, post-secondary education, health disparities for the Latino community across the nation. So I'm just happy to bring back learnings that I hear and to continue the conversation with elected officials across the nation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. There are no, oh, sorry, Mr. Scanlon?
I just, in reading the Exarban Horatio Career Scholarship winner with Javier, I just found it interesting, you know, that he would like to be an electrician apprentice, and that just, we need to continue to keep in mind that those partnerships with Metro Community College and our Career Center, getting students into programs that will help them be employable in very well-paying jobs is just as important as getting those students onto college. That I'm glad to see that he's interested in being an electrician, and it's a very well-paying career, and we just need to continue to do as much as we can as a school district to get those students into those programs or have those programs available to those students that are interested in it, that want to be maybe more hands-on, and I think that's great that the Exarban Scholarship Program has, you know, expanded in the last couple of years, and they're providing quite a bit of opportunity for our OPS students, and I'd like to thank them.
That's a very, that's a great point. All right. With that, we're going to move on to public comment and recognition, so our first public comment is from Bishop Larry Helm Sr. So if you please state your name and your address and the spelling of your last name, you'll have five minutes to speak, and Mr. Ray will keep you informed at 1 minute and at 30 seconds.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bishop Larry Helm Sr., B-I-S-H-O-P-L-A-R-R-Y-H-E-L-M-S-R. And I have a brief statement I'd like to read to you. United Minority Contractors Association requests for assistance process. Our North Omaha community and its contractors need a fair and honest clearinghouse for reliable information to help determine what is true or untrue about accusations leveled at the three key groups. Number one, our North Omaha contractors. Number two, the public entities they work for. Number three, those consultants who job us support and assist both the contractors to public entities. The United Minority Contractors Association has began to fill that void. As we accepted the Charles Construction Request for assistance to determine if his documentation has merit for us to act on his behalf, to assist him to be reimbursed or if losses occurred, in large part as a result of engagement of the Chambers Reach Program, we have accepted Charles Johnson's request. The reason for our stepping up is simple. We will always have honest disputes among ourselves, which we believe should be resolved among us. What we want to stop is the outside influences that have undue control on a segment of our community. These outside, excuse me, sorry, these outside influences are determined without our community's venting, who will be declared winners and losses from the North Omaha community, and more specifically, who are the winners and losses within the Black community. This privilege should be taken away from these outsiders. We believe winners are based on merit, providing a competitive price and high-quality performance, and not be dictated by Omaha's powers elite. Those outside influences may or may not be right in their judgment. Our community's fair and honest clearinghouse must be able to vent their judgment, and if these elites cause direct harm and financial hardship to any individuals of the three groups previously mentioned, they too must be held accountable for their actions and be called out publicly. As we go through the Charles Construction Request for assistance, we've proven a written fine report of our findings. At that same time, we would also share with the public all of the procedures, practices, and protocols we have put in place to ensure we'll be able to stand strong and to the principles of a fair and honest clearinghouse. Here are some of the basics. As with Charles Construction, each request made and findings will be shared with the Requestor's elected official representative, and appropriate public entity exempted to ensure transparency with our Contractors Association actions for appropriate third-party review to ensure we have made an accurate recitation of the Requestor's fact as presented and our findings made. And we will not accept a request without adequate documentation to draw a fact-finding conclusion. Our request for assistance process will be open to review by all connected to the request. Reach decline to participate after Charles Johnson gave written permission to do so. We will share all information with elected officials immediately upon request. We will seek a community approval as the community's only legitimate contractors clearinghouse and arbitrated through our elected official written endorsement of our unique role. We recognize our role is a privilege and not a right, which could be revoked at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I believe that's our only public comment, is that correct? All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us. So moved. So motion by Ms. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. So motion by Ms. Williams and second by Mrs. Fay to approve the consent agenda that is before us. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to information items, and I think we have a couple of outside speakers that are not normally here, so I'm going to move item J1B AQuest up first so that they can present, and we'll move the committees down just a bit.
While that adjustment's being made, if we could invite our speakers to come forward, would that be okay?
That would be great.
We're delighted to have, from the State Board of Education, John Weitzel, and he is going to be speaking in tandem with the Nebraska Department of Education, Sue Anderson, so that there'll be a thorough understanding of the new state accountability system.
Good evening, OPS School Board. It's like coming home. Thank you very much for having us. I'm thrilled to be here tonight with Dr. Sue Anderson from the NDE. She'll be basically giving the main briefing on AQuest tonight. And from a personal note, it has been a pleasure working with each of these past few years, and we have great expectations for the future. Thank you very much. AQuest now, why AQuest? As you all very well know, our current, or excuse me, our previous accountability system was the Nebraska Performance Accounting System, and basically, all that held in regards to, if you will, accountability was MISA scores and graduation rates. That was it. That's how That's how schools were graded and positioned by really those factors only. And that had been going on for years. Up comes LB438. 438 has instructed NDE to identify three priority schools, classifications for all schools, also implementation plans for priority schools, and progress plans for the priority schools. Now we can, tonight, we could literally take a NEPAS and say, okay, these are our three priority schools. However, also, LB438, it instructed us to create a new accountability system. That is AQuest. AQuest is, it'll bring, if you will, rank our schools with grades. They'll grade from excellent, great, good, and needing improvement. It's a fair way to evaluate our schools versus just the NESA scores. It includes anything from graduation rate, truancy, all the factors that affect our young people's education. So without further ado, Dr. Sue Anderson will provide us a briefing on the mechanics of AQuest. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you very much for making time on your agenda for a little bit of information about Nebraska's new accountability system for public schools and districts. It is AQuest. It's an acronym that stands for Accountability for a Quality Education System today and tomorrow. And you'll see in this first slide, you are part of something broader, bolder, and better. And that's the theme that the State Board of Education and the Nebraska Department of Education are using to message what we want folks to understand about this new accountability We have, in addition to building this accountability system, we've paid close attention to the messages that we want to communicate with all of our stakeholders. And so what you see on this slide is one of several key message pieces that are available on our aquest.com website. This one is in particular targeting policymakers. And I just might say that these slides that I'm sharing with you tonight are the same slides that the Nebraska Association of School Boards groups are sharing and have been sharing with local school boards across the state of Nebraska, starting in late September throughout this month. And so I'm very pleased to share this information with you as well. John alluded to some of the things around AQuest, and I just wanted to include this slide to show you that when we talk about accountability, there's federal accountability for public schools and districts, and there's state accountability for public schools and districts in Nebraska. And you probably know that ESEA, Reauthorization, is something that we're wondering if it's going to happen soon. We hope it's going to happen soon. But until it does, we are accountable to the requirements of the No Child Left Behind. At the same time, though, we've been charged in Nebraska to develop a new accountability system, and that is AQuest. And so for the time being, we are going to be meeting the requirements of both federal and state accountability. Some of the influences on accountability in Nebraska, you can see here, if there are any of you who are around the table tonight, who were here in about 2000, you'll remember that accountability in Nebraska was known as STARS. And that accountability system was characterized by the development of local assessments that were designed to meet the state's standards. Then we moved from STARS in about 2008 to NEPAS, and John mentioned that previous accountability system, which was simply a rank ordering of schools and districts based on their performance on NESA tests or state tests and graduation rates. Now we are in what we are thinking is the best accountability system we have the opportunity to design, and that is AQuest. And it is characterized by some things that I'm going to share with you in the next couple of minutes, including college and career-ready standards and assessments. I wanted to just call your attention to the circle graphic on the left of this slide. This captures the vision and the tenants of AQuest. It recognizes the importance of student success and access and in teaching and learning. And within those two domains, there are six tenants. College and career-ready, assessment, educator effectiveness, positive partnerships, relationships in student success, transitions, and educational opportunities and access. Those are the six tenants that provide the framework for our new accountability system. I might mention that as this system began to be developed, it wasn't just a few folks at the Department of Ed sitting in a room around a table making some arbitrary decisions about what this system should be about. This map represents participation of a number of folks across the state in an assessment and accountability advisory, and those folks worked for over a year to develop the core or the basis for our accountability system, which I'll share with you. The law, LB438, which is, was a legislative bill in the 2014 session, is now revised state statute 79, 760, .06 and 07, and it gives the requirements, the basic requirements for accountability. And in that law, it says that we must classify the performance of all schools and districts using the following indicators: performance on NESA tests or the statewide assessments, improvement, growth, and graduation, plus additional indicators that may be selected by the State Board of Education. And on this graphic, you see a very simple representation of the work of that task force in recommending how the basis of the accountability system will work. You'll see two additional indicators in that left side of the table. An adjustment for non-proficient students and limits for participation. So that task force added a couple of additional indicators. And you'll see the way it works is we start out with how kids do on the state tests. That's the status. And the calculation is they're either to four, or three, or two, or one. And then we look at adjustments for improvement, adjustments for growth, adjustments for the number of non-proficient students in the school and the district, limits based on participation on the test, and limits for graduation. And so that piece right there forms the basis of AQuest. But the State Board of Education was not satisfied that that was adequate. The State Board members felt like our accountability system should recognize more than performance on state tests and graduation rates. And so you remember that circular graphic with those tenants of AQuest? The State Board of Education actually charged the department with continuing to develop that system to include indicators that represent all of those tenants. And so we've been working very, very hard to do that. What we discovered is that the Department of Ed did not always collect the right data to represent those things, like transitions, positive partnerships and relationships, educational opportunities and access. For all the data that we collect, we were not collecting the data around those things that the State Board of Education has said are very important in knowing how well schools and districts are doing and ultimately how well students are doing. And so in order to address that, we developed an instrument to gather that information from all of our school building principals and district superintendents. It's known as the Evidence-Based Analysis. It's an electronic survey. It is out right now. All building principals and district superintendents are working on the Evidence-Based Analysis, otherwise known as the EBA. And it consists of a number of items that are associated with those six tenants of AQuest about policies, procedures, and practices that schools are implementing related to improving student achievement. And we're asking building principals and superintendents to tell us, how are you doing with those practices, policies, and procedures? In addition, we're also asking principals and superintendents to tell us, what do you need help with? What support would you appreciate? Technical support, professional development, or other kinds of support in meeting those expectations around the tenants of AQuest? So it's a very ambitious project. We probably have about 50% of our districts and schools completed the survey. It will be completed by November 1. In addition, the information that we gather from that survey will be folded into the accountability calculation. So we'll look at the NESA performance, the graduation data, improvement, growth, participation, non-proficient, so on. Plus, we'll look at those responses that principals and superintendents are providing us on the EBA, and we will come up with a final classification. And as John mentioned, the statute specifically says to classify the performance, not rank the performance, but classify the performance. So the State Board of Education has said we will have four classification levels. They are labeled needs improvement, good, great, and excellent. So all school districts and public schools will be classified into one of those final classifications. So as you see here, we'll take that, what we're calling the raw classification, which is based on the graduation rate and the assessment performance, plus the responses to that Evidence-Based Analysis, and we'll come up with that final classification rating. That's just another representation to remind us that both districts and each school building will get a classification. What that means is that there may be some schools within a district that will have a different rating from what the district receives. This accountability system is different in another way. It is about providing support to schools and districts. And one of the things we're going to be able to do in this system is to provide a profile of data for each school and district. It will include the data used to classify the school and district, but it'll include a lot of other data that we collect at the Department of Education. So that we will be able to use the profile at the department level to respond to district and building needs. We will also use that profile in our process to determine those three priority schools that John mentioned earlier. But schools can use this profile, districts can use this profile, as an important part of their continuous improvement process. And once again, these are the four classification levels. The law is specific and also says that we must identify three schools from the lowest classification to be designated as priority schools. We have defined priority schools as those most in need of assistance to improve. Just as a context, there are 1,129 school buildings, public school buildings in Nebraska. We must designate from that lowest level of classification three as our priority schools to receive targeted support from the Department of Education. We will use the results from the Evidence-Based Analysis and the classification process to help us identify those three schools. We are also looking at a whole lot of other data points in order to make those determinations. The designation of the priority schools will be made sometime in early December. That's our target date. That's also our target date for announcing the classification of schools and districts. Here are some of the key dates for implementation around AQuest. As I mentioned before, the Evidence-Based Analysis is being completed right now, and it will, the window for completing is, will close on November 1. We hope by the middle of this month, or somewhere near the middle of this month, to be able to release to schools and districts only what their raw classification results would be. Now, what I mean by that is if we just assigned a classification level based on NESA test performance, growth, improvement, graduation rate, participation, you would be able to see how you would fare in that classification rating. It is not a public release, and the reason it is not is because it is not complete. It will not be complete until we also fold in the results of the Evidence-Based Analysis. So that raw classification data will be coming out soon. As mentioned before, our target date for announcing the final classification of all schools and districts and the designation of the three priority schools will be in December. And then in January, we will begin the work with those three priority schools by way of our support and intervention teams, which we are working to develop and identify right now. One of the dates that I don't have on this slide, which I probably should have, which is the only date that shows up in the legislation around accountability, and it's August of 2016. And by August of 2016, the three priority schools must submit a progress plan for improvement to the State Board of Education for approval. And each year thereafter, the priority schools will submit a progress report to the State Board until the State Board deems that the school is no longer in a priority status. The last thing that I, or one of the last things I want to mention is a graphic that looks kind of strange and you can't read it from where you are, but this is just sort of a timeline that shows kind of where the work began on accountability for Nebraska and where we are now. We're nearing that October segment down there in the lower right-hand of the graphic. We've got a lot of work left to do. We've sort of joked and said, you know, we're building this plane while we're flying it. We're on a very ambitious timeline. But so far, we're on track, and we feel very strongly that this is the right way to do accountability, if you have to do accountability. And the last thing I want to share with you is just a screenshot of our aquest.com website. It has a number of really good resources. I would encourage you to go there if you are curious about this accountability system. It even contains a media kit with some information that you might find helpful as you share about the accountability system with your constituents. It also has a place where you can send questions. They come to an email in my email inbox, but we have a staff of folks who work on answering those questions as they come up. So we're inviting you to shoot us those questions as you may have them. Now, I'm wondering if you have any questions of me?
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Scanlon?
I've just had a couple of questions, well, and comments. I was glad to see that the, that there was the growth part of this evaluation, just due to the fact that we, as a district, have so many English-language learners, English is a second language. That's nice to see that you're going to take that into consideration. Just a question, since Nebraska's so broad as far as populations and urban versus rural school districts, how did you guys take into consideration, or did you take into consideration those differences?
The answer to the question is absolutely, we take into consideration the differences. And when you're working with accountability and you're trying to create a system that will work for all schools, no matter how large they are or how small they are, you have a lot of challenges. And the challenges tend to be more on the side of the very small schools. And the challenges tend to be more on the side of the very small schools. Schools with very low student numbers feel the largest impact, for instance, on the difference of a graduation rate from one year to the next, or even from performance on the state test from one year to the next. If one student moves out of the district, it can make a big difference. And so, we try to build the system in a way that minimizes or mitigates those fluctuations and stabilize it as much as possible. And we want to use the evidence-based analysis to help provide a stabilizing factor to what might occur because of what happens with small numbers of students with regard to test performance and graduation rates.
Then another question, I guess, I had two more questions. With the, I guess, does this take into effect to where we can guarantee that we're still being very rigorous with our academics for those students that might be coming in that are English language learners or fall into the non-proficient category? That we can still have high expectations and meet state expectations for a quality education?
I think that we certainly intend to do that, and one way we do that is that as our state standards come around for revision, we are going through processes that deem them to be college and career-ready standards. In other words, to underscore their rigor. And this has already occurred for our English Language Arts standards, and we most recently have had the institutions of higher ed in Nebraska sign off on our math standards as being college and career-ready. So, as each of those content area standards come up for revision, we're working on science standards now, they will go through that same process. And so, we want to, you know, create those high standards with a lot of rigor. And then, what comes right after that is the development of the state assessments to align with those college and career-ready standards, so that the assessments are rigorous as well.
Then my last question, you said there were over 1,000 stu-, or 1,000 schools?
Yeah.
Was it just the legislature that chose that the number is only going to be three?
Yes.
I guess, how does that work from year to year? If you're designated in year one, you're designated as one of those three schools, are you taken off the list for the next couple of years and you're under review, but other schools would be considered, it won't be the same school from year to year? Or how does that work?
There can only be three priority schools in any one year. So, what we know about improvement of very low-performing schools is that they likely would not improve significantly in one year's time to probably exit that priority status. So, we're assuming that the priority schools will likely be in that priority status for at least a couple of years. But as one, or two, or all three exit that priority status, another school will come in, so that there will only be three at any one time. I thought you were going to ask me the question, why only three? I do not know. I was not privy to that conversation, or why the magic number of three. But three is what we have.
Mrs. Fay.
Thank you. I have some questions that just fit right in with Mr. Scanlon's. I believe it was three because of funding.
I would probably agree.
Do you know how much money is allocated for priority schools?
The, I don't know for the priority schools, for the entire accountability budget.
I'm just interested in the priority schools.
Don't have that number yet.
Okay. Maybe we could get that. I think that would be good information for us to know.
We are-
I'd like to know kind of how it relates to what we are spending on our own sort of priority schools, just to compare what the state thinks it's going to take versus what we're doing as we focus on schools like Wakanda, Howard Kennedy. Can you just go back to growth and improvement? And for the public's sake, just talk a little bit about the difference between those two?
Yes.
How you calculate it?
I don't have the calculation memorized to tell you, but I can tell you the difference.
Great.
Growth refers to the same students. In other words, we look at the performance of third graders, of this year's fourth graders compared to when they were third graders the year before. So, that's how we measure growth. It's at the student level.
So, ID number to ID number, you're not tied, okay?
Yes.
I think that's important for people to understand that it's not within a building where there's a lot of student movement perhaps.
Right. And that is because, well, that is actually part of the legislation, and the focus was on the importance of the individual student and how well a student is succeeding. Improvement refers to different groups of students. In other words, we want to compare the performance of this year's fourth graders to last year's fourth graders within that building and within that district. So, we're going to be looking at both of those measures, improvement and growth.
So, and I think across a district is one thing, although we still have a fairly transient population within and out of our district. But in a building is where I feel like especially some of our smaller buildings, where that number doesn't hold water anymore, and it isn't, you know, you have, you could have enough students move out of a building between, you know, that it just, it's not going to hold up. So, I just, you know, so is there one that's weighted more than the other, growth and improvement?
No, but you can only get an adjustment up. In other words, for growth and improvement, you can realize an adjust, a positive adjustment. You can't realize a negative.
Okay.
Okay? The only indicator that you could either adjust up or down is the number of non-proficient students. In other words, if you have more non-proficient students this year than you did last year, it can mean a bump down. If you have fewer non-proficient students this year than you did last year, it can be a bump up.
Okay. Thank you. My last question has to do with the priority schools again. So, if, if I understand the way that the EBA is used, then if a school is already, maybe falls into that, that Needs Improvement category, but is already receiving additional support services, for example, we have a school that has the School Improvement Grant.
Right.
Would that necessarily make them less of a consideration for a priority school, even though their overall ranking, not ranking, what did you call it? Classification?
Yes.
Maybe, you know, have them fairly low on the list, but rather than layering your services on top of federal services, you know, rather than putting all of your money in one school?
That's a really good question. And when I mentioned earlier that in the designation of priority schools process, we're going to be looking at a vast array of data. Included in those data are what support is the school already receiving in terms of grants and other types of support. And we want to really focus in on the schools who are in most need of support.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Snow.
Mr. Vargas. Thank you very much. So, for the, so the legislature determined that there's three out of the 1,129 that will be priority schools. And at any given point, we can never have more than three, upwards of three, over five years. So, that means like over the next three years, we can't have more than three, right?
Right.
Unless there's something that changes in the legislature?
Yes.
Okay. Who, so for the six tenants?
Yes.
That are being measured?
Yes.
So, you mentioned that some of the tenants are reported by the schools, right? Are there specific ones that are reported and some that are required? Or are they all optional?
I'm thinking, I hope I understand your question.
Yeah.
We are, we are using the responses in the EBA that are tied to the six tenants as those indicators that we're, that we are folding into that classification calculation.
Sorry, EBA, just for the public also?
The evidence-based analysis.
Okay.
That survey. Right. And so, we're asking questions there around things like transition programs from grade to grade, educational opportunities and access for kids. Just questions that really represent all of those tenants, so that we feel like we're looking at data that is represented across all tenants, not just the assessment and graduation.
If a school doesn't complete that survey?
Yes.
What happens?
If they don't complete the survey, then the classification will be based on the assessment data and the graduation rate. And I should have said, the response to the EBA can only help you.
Okay.
Okay? It can only help you. So, if you don't complete the EBA, you're classified based on the assessment data and the graduation data. If you do complete the EBA, it provides an opportunity for you to get an additional bump up on that classification rating, but it can't bring you down.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because if, if I'm understanding this, if schools across the state, including our district, don't complete the survey, there is no accountability mechanism for the accountability system to then be able to ensure we have data for each school to be able to as best as possible compare, so that it's, the system is comparing apples and apples as best as possible?
Right. That's correct. We're, and so what we're doing is, we are hoping that people will see the value of completing the survey. And to complete it in an honest way, because the results of the survey cannot impact your classification in a negative way. I might also say, and I didn't want to get it too much in the weeds, but we're sort of going into the weeds, the district evidence-based analysis also contains the required annual Rule 10 assurances form that all districts' superintendents must submit every year to say they are in compliance with the accreditation rule. And that, that form is part of the district-level EBA. In other words, you can't answer one without answering the other. So, we know that we're going to have all 240-some of our districts that are going to submit the EBA. We're, we've got a very, very good number of our school buildings that have already submitted. So, we're pretty confident about that.
How many, what's the percentage of schools that have submitted?
I would say at this point, we're probably at about 50%.
For the specific survey for each school?
Yep.
Okay.
But we've also got a large number that are 99% complete. And we figure that there's a, they've probably forgotten to hit the final arrow key at the bottom of the last page.
Okay. The reason why I ask is be so that, I'm sure you know this because you guys committed a plan for it, to the federal government, the educator equity profiles. I think it's important the public knows that these educator equity profiles are created by the states as a mechanism to try to address inequities in education across the nation, specifically empowering states to do this. I'm worried, and hopefully at LPS, we take more accountability on this, and I'm sure we will, that by not having a standard for data for across all the schools, that we're ultimately making our decisions on who are the lowest or the highest needs schools in this classification with an incomplete set of data in an inequitable way. Because this school over here voluntarily submits their data, and we are not having some of our experts at the NDE, for probably budgetary reasons and capacity reasons, which we obviously need to address, to go into schools and diagnose, given that we have amazing people on our staff, to then collect the data so that we have a more objective understanding of where our schools are. So, I'm saying that also for OPS, because I think that we're already doing that with some of our schools and our, and our smaller innovations that we're doing, obviously with Wakanda and with Kennedy. But I want to make sure that as a district, we are acknowledging that that system doesn't exist within AQuest. We have to make the system for ourselves. But the opportunity to share the data does exist. I just hope all 100% of the schools take advantage of that, because if they don't, you won't have a complete picture of who needs. And who determines, so it's back to Mrs. Fay's comment, what is the formula? What's the percentage breakdown for weight of the different tenants? How is this sort of data-driven to determine who is in each priority?
The, right now, there is no weighting of the, excuse me, of the tenants.
Okay.
All of the items on the evidence-based analysis are equally weighted.
Okay. And who determines, based off of all the data that comes in, incomplete or complete the designations, final ones?
We, our process includes our NDE staff that will do the lion's share of the work of reviewing all the data for all the Needs Improvement schools. It's going to be a very exhaustive process that will be both quantitative and qualitative in nature. And then we will make a recommendation to the commissioner about the schools that we feel are most in need of assistance to improve. He will make the recommendation to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education will actually make the formal designation.
Will the summaries of your, your analysis based on the data be public?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. So, there's a standard for all of it, and we share it so that we can inform our schools and that's fantastic. I love that. And who determines whether or not, is it the commissioner that determines whether or not one of the 1,129 schools, which three of those are going to be priority, really needs and intervention schools?
I think the commissioner will rely very heavily on the recommendations-
Okay.
-brought forward by the NDE staff, who are actually charged with this responsibility. And then he will carry those recommendations to the State Board.
Okay. The last, the last piece, just for the public, and I'd love to get clarity on this. For the priority schools that, and I know this is in the bill, I'm trying to remember the exact language, there is a review committee that is in charge of the turnaround?
Yes, an intervention team.
An intervention team, correct, yeah. Who are the people on the intervention team? I know there was information on that there. Is there, is there a budget for the intervention team in terms of how much we're sort of paying for the extra time that they're doing work?
Yes, there's actual language in the statute that says that members of the intervention team can be compensated for their work as part of the intervention team, so yes. And who is going to be on the intervention team? Our, our planning right now is that there are some layers of support in addition to the intervention team, but the intervention team itself will actually consist of the building principal and key staff in that building. And the law says that the team can only be up to five members, but that intervention team will be facilitated by NDE staff and supported by NDE staff and outside experts. So, there are multi-layers of support that get wrapped into the intervention.
Okay. That's great. I don't have any more questions right now. Thank you very much for answering those questions.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you. And just to follow up, I'll piggyback off Mr. Vargas's question. So, out of those three priority schools that are Needs Improvement, is there a plan for a school that stays on that list?
Yes.
For a long period of time?
The law also has some language in it that says for a priority school that stays in that priority status for five consecutive years, the State Board can then intervene and make some decisions about what will happen with that school after those five years.
Could you go a little bit into detail of intervene?
I don't, I don't have any specifics about that. I don't think that we've even begun to think about- I don't think that we've even begun to think about that as we're designing the designation process as we speak. So I'm sure as we get further into the process, we'll come up with some more of those specifics.
And the reason why I ask is just because, you know, certain states, when they intervene, they just take over the school.
Right.
So just trying to figure out what, what that means. And my other question, you said that the schools will submit progress reports or plans? Why not the district?
The, well, the, the progress plan is specific to that school. And so the school will submit the plan, but of course it would be done with the cooperation and the support of the district. But the plan is specific to the school.
I mean, the reason why, I mean, my piece is, I understand each school is different, but at the end of the day, if a school's struggling, I think that responsibility should actually be rested with the district. That's just my piece to that. So, the school will submit a plan every year to...
But we anticipate, we're going to be working closely with the district level as we work on that, those intervention strategies in support of the priority school.
Okay. And this doesn't cost the district any additional dollars?
Not that I know of.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Overtime, right. So I guess I have just a couple of thoughts, and I don't know if anybody else has any other questions, but as we wrap up, for those schools that you haven't received the EBAs for, are you letting the superintendents of those districts know so that they can encourage the school building to get that sent in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's important.
What's happened is, in very many of our districts, the superintendent's staff and the building-level staff have been really working together
Sure.
to, to make sure that the submissions happen as they should.
Sure.
Yeah.
And it sounds like, according to Mr. Evans, that's what's happening in our, in our buildings as well.
Yeah.
And then I guess, I would just encourage everybody, if you have additional questions, gather those up and we can either get them to NDE or to John or, and make sure that we get them answered. I think there'll probably be more questions as we move through this process. But thank you so much for sharing with us
You're welcome.
information and helping us to understand this, because we're hearing about it, but it's very helpful for us to understand it from a district level and, and know what the impacts are and how the plan is going to be laid out. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we're gonna just rearrange a little bit. I'm sorry.
Sorry, this is a closing. I just, can you share that information exactly?
Dr. Kerberg?
Mr. Vargas just asked how we're working with our schools to make sure they're informed. I'm really pleased to tell you, we have Dr. Anderson coming back, talking with our principals, and that's next week. We're also supporting our principals by telling them about the survey and going through that survey with them at the principals' meeting. And then we'll also monitor if anyone doesn't respond. So we're making sure they're aware of it and doing some internal controls as well.
Yes, exactly. So with that, we're gonna rearrange just a little bit, so everybody kind of has an idea of what we're doing here. We'll do the Green Schools Initiative, then we'll do CBAC, and then the Family FCS, and then Jacob's Truancy, and then our committees, so that those folks who are here from the outside can be further up the list in, in getting their presentations. So with that, we will move to what was J1C, Green Schools Initiative update. Ms. Gagel?
Yes. I'm sure everyone knows Mr. Craig Moody from Verdis Group, but he will be delivering the annual Green Schools Initiative update.
Madam President, members of the board, good to see you again. Thanks for allowing me to come in and visit. My name is, is Craig Moody, I'm with Verdis Group. We've been working with the district very closely for the last six years. On its Green Schools Initiative update, I believe you've received the annual report in advance, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in there. I don't intend to take up a lot of your time, and obviously if there are questions, I would love to entertain those as we get going. So a few of the numbers in your report have changed since that was completed about two months ago, so I just wanted to quickly update you on a few of those figures. First, the cumulative savings number, which is one that we always like to remind districts to make sure that they monitor. It's about $5.5 million over about the last four and a half, five years, which is pretty exceptional. Majority of that is in energy costs, a pretty considerable reduction in energy costs, and the, and the balance remainder that is not energy is related to, we're recycling, actually. That is economical. The other thing that I'll note is the district is paying a little bit closer to greenhouse gas emissions, and, and the reduction of 50,000 metric tons is the equivalent to about 4,500 households' energy use in a given year. So that helps at least put it into perspective. Schools continue to apply for and earn Green Ribbon Awards, which is the National Department of Education Award for Sustainability Efforts. The most recent year, Gomez and Wilson, just a couple bullets about each. Gomez has seen a 10% reduction in water consumption for the last two years. They have three rain barrels on site that they use for irrigation, and about 35% of their grounds are used to benefit wildlife, which is, which is really pretty unique and exceptional. Wilson also has rain barrels on, on campus. They've got landscaping that decreases the need for irrigation, and each grade level has a garden box where they're growing food, and part of that is often donated. So those two schools are really doing some exceptional things. Again, a couple of updates on some of the numbers that you've seen. So Energy Star is the big one that we always track. This is a graph that I get so excited to see every month after we pull these numbers together. So quickly, for those of you, the dark green line is a measure of how much the district spends on energy consumption per square foot. The light green line is the district-wide average Energy Star rating. So as you might imagine, those things often operate in, operate inversely to one another. The district's average Energy Star rating right now is 66.9, which puts you well above the average, and you are well on your way to achieving the goal of getting to 70 by December of 2019. Progress, as of late, has been really exceptional. And the good news is that every time we get more efficient with our energy, we're, we're saving dollars when we do that. Energy Stars, again, it's a number between around 100, and so the higher the number, the better. There are some schools that are pretty consistently at 90 or above, they're listed here. Miller Park is a pretty steady performer in the mid to upper 90s. And then there are another 22 in the 80s, so, you know, about upper 20s. There are a lot of schools that are, that are doing exceptionally well. On average, the district has seen a 12.6% increase in its Energy Star rating over the last 12 months. There are only eight schools that haven't seen an increase in 12 months, which is really, really great. That is, it is widespread success across the district. Recycling, despite what came out in the New York Times yesterday, recycling is economical and it is good for the environment, and OPS understands and sees that as well. The district recycling rate today is about 24%, which it's leveled off over the last few years, but it's still very kind of slowly climbing. The goal that we're working towards is 30 by December of 2019, so we're about 85% of the way there. This graph just quickly shows you that the green bars are recycling volume and the gray is waste. This is, this is a tough nut to crack oftentimes for schools, because as, as more programs continue to occur, more after-school programs, it's really tough to manage what's coming into your building and what needs to go out. The good news is that a larger and larger percentage of, of what is going out in the waste stream is actually finding its way to the recycling stream. Again, a couple of the all-stars, Chandler View, Parkup, Crest Ridge, and Miller Park are all at 49% or higher of their diversion rates. So in other words, roughly what this means for you is that every time a waste dumpster gets emptied and leaves the school, a recycling dumpster gets emptied and leaves the school. It's, it's almost a one-for-one situation with those two schools. Minor challenge with this calculation is that we just have to assume that every time that dumpster gets emptied, it's full. That may or may not be true on any given week, but that's part of what we have to assume. And there are another nine schools that are between 40 and 43. So again, the goal district-wide is to get to 30, very achievable as we continue to move forward. And then the other high priority area where we're tracking information is water. Water, we're doing, again, quite well, as, as you can see in the annual report. Really kind of the key metric here is to measure total consumption divided by the number of occupants in a building, which is really students plus staff, so that it's normalized from one building to the next. And so when you see the bills, bills, that means that 805 gallons of water are used per year for every occupant in that building. So it's still a pretty big number per occupant when you think about it, but by and large, this is, this is an area where, as of late, the district has really had some excellent progress. In particular, over the, over the summer months, that's usually when, if the district is gonna see a spike in water use, it's over the summer months. Fortunately, it was pretty, there was pretty consistent raining throughout the summer, so many schools didn't have to do all that irrigation that they might've done in previous years. So there's been a pretty significant decrease in water consumption. The last thing that I want to talk about, there are two programs that are active today. There's a recognition program that District Operational Services staff really kind of led the creation of. It's something that we advised and kind of gave them a little bit of consultation on, but for the most part, it was independently created. And it's, in essence, starts in August, wraps up in April, and it's a creation of different things that schools can do. On any given month, it's kind of broken out by themes per month. And then based on whatever activity was accomplished, the school gets a point, or anywhere from one to, I think there are some where they earn five or six points. And then you add those all up at the end of the year, and there are benefits to achieving a higher number of points. So we've seen some schools really take this and run with it, which has been really impressive to watch. And, you know, you're starting to get into this healthy competition from one school to the next, which is really good, as long as you foster that in a meaningful and productive way. But for the most part, the recognition program just bursts out of the gates at the beginning of the year, and, and many schools are really taking ownership of it going forward. And it's not just a list of things to do, there are resources that are laden throughout the thing, so that schools aren't left with, okay, this is a task that they want us to do, but we don't know how to approach that. There are multiple resources that they can, they can use. The Green Data Sheets are a tool that is pushed out twice a year, and it's an Excel-based document that I want to show you just real quick. If I can find it. So it, it, in essence, gives schools an opportunity to really dig into the numbers to see how they're doing. So as an example, this is North High School. With, with respect to Energy Star ratings, it shows what their Energy Star rating is, which is a 76, it shows their peer group average. So every school, we know what these numbers are, and it pre-populates their peer group average, and it shows a district average, and then it actually maps all these things out on that cool little graph right there. I'm kind of a graph nerd. The yellow line, by the way, is, is the point at which you actually become eligible to earn an Energy Star award. So it's a really good feedback tool for schools to look, and they can compare and contrast, and you know, the, the principal might take a look and see how Central's doing, and maybe wants to take a peek at itself. And so it really, again, it sort of feeds that desire to create competition in some ways. And then the same thing happens for waste and recycling. These graphs over here, I won't bore you with all of them, but it shows your school versus your peer group with respect to what the diversion rate is, and then as you go down, it takes a look at how you're doing updated. So it's, again, it's baseline versus actual, or today's. And then the same idea happens for water. So again, we've got, we've got over six years of data, so it's really interesting for schools to understand how they're doing over time. It's one thing to just give them a snapshot for today, but it's really important to have that context. And so again, the water is another one. This is something that the district is using when it goes out to all schools to kind of put in front of them as sort of, here's, here's, here's kind of where you stand. Which numbers do you really want to try and affect? All of them have district-wide goals, so it all kind of feeds up to these district-wide goals that all of these schools are kind of collectively trying to navigate towards. The good news is that all those goals were over 75% of the way there in every case. So the progress has been great. It's just a matter of getting over that, you know, it's kind of like a diet. You lose that first 20 like that, it's that last five or six is kind of what we're working on today, is making sure that we get, we get there. Okay. That is all I wanted to share with you. I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Fay.
Thank you. That was a great report. I think probably my questions are maybe be better, I mean, jump in, but I'm gonna address them to Dr. Turnquist, if that's okay. So how are we working at all with the Greens, working the Green Schools Initiative into the bond work?
Well, I think I would ask Mr. Summer to come up and address that
That would be great.
because we, I knew that's what you wanted me to do. Because we are very conscious of energy conservation and ethical use, not only of materials, but also systems. I do want to say one thing while he's coming up and to reiterate what Craig said, the healthy competition in this among schools is very good, but I think equally important is the inherent value that young people have found in this. Some of you may have seen the television video at Gateway where a young man was explaining their recycling program at the beginning, and they showed scenes of what the students were doing. And at the end, the announcer asked that student how he felt about this, and he said, "It makes me feel like a better person." And I think that's equally important as, if not more so, than the competition. So the way this has taken off in the schools with students, I think, has been phenomenal.
To, to answer the questions, we had a few, we've had a few meetings to discuss the, the Green School initiatives and how it would plug into new construction. What I would say we're at right now is, all of the design teams work on sustainable solutions, you know, and the campuses are all very different. But the themes of sustainability, whether it's through LEED or green building, all of those themes, we apply, or we ask our design and engineers to apply. We're not necessarily pursuing any particular, you know, award or certification, that's, that's not been the charge, because there are other components that come with all of those. But I would say globally, as a bond program, energy, everybody understands it's a significant, you know, operational cost long-term, so we do everything we can from daylight harvesting techniques and using the heat pump strategies that the district already currently employs. And again, inside of each project, there's probably some specifics, if you want me to gather them up and share them that way, I can. I just don't have any very specific for any particular project right now.
I just want to make sure that there's, you know, ongoing communication, and I know that we're tapering off our contract with Verdis Group. So she's shaking her head. That, that has been the plan, so what we...
Well, that, that is the plan. There may be some options going forward. This is the last year of the existing
Right.
contract, yes.
But perhaps not.
Well, we're looking at some new initiatives.
Because they're doing such a good job.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I guess I want to make sure that there's ongoing communication, and I understand, rather than just parallel tracks, that because there have been so effective in the work that they've done for us, that there's actually some collaboration.
We've had several discussions and meetings
Right.
and so if, if the district continues to engage
Right.
the services, we will continue that in the process for sure.
So with Minnie Dacus gone, who is kind of taking ownership of this? Dr. Turnquist?
Well, what Dr. Dacus worked with primarily was directly with the schools. And she worked under Sue Colvin, and Sue has taken on that additional role, and so she's in the schools constantly and brings back wonderful stories about what the schools are doing. And I think that's absolutely key, because it's not only what we do as a district in our buildings with our materials, it's the educational piece of it for young people. And I think that continues to grow and grow.
Right, right. And I appreciate Sue doing that. I would kind of like to, you know, I'm assuming you'll keep an eye on it, because without someone owning that piece of it, you know, I would hate for things to, because I know that Sue has a lot of other responsibilities as well. So I would hate for us to see a slide in some of those numbers and towards those goals that we're trying to reach without, you know, there being somebody who's got that piece as a higher priority in their position. So I guess my last, well, and I have two more So I guess my last, well, I have two more questions. Looking at the report, even though we have 100% participation, and that's right, we have 100% participation in our schools, but they're not all, they don't all participate in the same way or at the same level. Is that right? I mean, what they choose to participate in is sort of up to each school, the way...
I can talk somewhat intelligently about that, based on the conversations I've had with the district staff. But we don't interact with the schools really very frequently anymore. I think it's fair to say that there's a diversity of ways for schools to be involved and get engaged. And yeah, there's absolutely, you know, two ends of that equilibrium. Some schools are highly engaged and are, you know, Chandler View is a good example. As of late, they took this recognition program and created an online work plan for how they were going to accomplish the whole thing. So they were just kind of knocking it out of the park. Certainly, there are other schools that are not doing that, as I understand it. I don't, I can't, I can't, you know, definitively tell you how diverse that is from one end of the spectrum to the next.
And I think, Mrs. Fay, that's one of the focuses of where we're moving, the work that Sue is doing, in order to maintain that with the really high-performing schools, but to bring even more schools on board with constantly increasing engagement in the Green Schools Initiative. That's a high priority for us. It's been a huge change from the beginning, the implementation, the inception of the Green Schools Initiative, which could have turned out to be a district imposition of something on schools which never really got any follow-through. And I think the way it has grown and developed at the school level has been phenomenal. And I know Sue is absolutely dedicated to bringing more and more of those schools on. You may recall that Dr. Dacus was the one who finally got us to 100%. We had one school that wasn't even participating at all.
Well, and I think that's great, that there's, you know, that it's kind of grown, you know, with an initiative from each school, and then they own it, and then they take, you know, they feel responsible for what it is they've chosen to do. I think I would look at those pieces that are providing the greatest return and maybe consider that those become strongly or encouraged, yeah, without being mandatory. So my last question, I know last year, we talked a lot about things like the energy savings performance contracting, and I know Mr. Vargas was part of those discussions, and Mr. Wayne, the revolving fund, and it, you know, then we passed a bond, and we're doing some, funding some of these things a little bit differently. Are we considering any of those things at all?
I think we saw some problems with the revolving fund, some difficulties legally. So we are continuing to look at new initiatives, and that's one of the things we like to turn to Craig to bring us ideas, and he always does.
Right. I know, I think he brought a lot of those to us last year, and I just wasn't sure where we had gone with any of those, if we still sort of have them on the back burner.
I think now that we're working with the bond and we're developing all of our plans with sustainability in mind, I think possibly down the road, now the next step will be to go back and look at some of those initiatives. Perhaps not the same ones, but something that will be truly beneficial to the district.
Well, since we have the incentive program in place, it almost seems like that's kind of a natural one, is to let them recoup some of those savings and keep them in the building. I don't know if that's something that you've considered or not, but that would be a great incentive, right? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I did have one question. Some of the slides that you showed this evening are different than the ones that we have loaded. Would it be possible to load, have Mr. Ray load?
Oh, of course.
The slides that you just showed, so that...
Yeah, of course.
Those are out there for everyone? And then you mentioned the, I think it was the green sheets or green...
Green data sheets, yes. Not the sexiest name, but yeah.
Yeah. So is there the ability for, do those get sent to the schools, or is there ability for folks to just take a look at those?
So again, I'll generally defer to the district on that. We create them and then turn them over to Ms. Colvin, and she then sends them out via a couple mechanisms internally to keep people, all the schools get them. And then that's, again, I believe Sue's been going out to every school, visiting every school, kind of having conversations about Green Schools Initiative, what do you want to do? And the green data sheets provide sort of the information that helps them. They're not posted publicly, that's something that the district doesn't, I mean, we're completely comfortable with that, but it's the district's information, it's very rich. And so I would leave that up to you all to determine. If a wider dissemination is appropriate, then we are more than happy to help facilitate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick tie-up on it. I know Mark didn't go into details on some of the activities that are going on in buildings. That is something I would encourage the board to, as you have opportunities to meet with schools and meet with the staff there. You know, off the top of my head, as I look at some of the new systems, or the HVAC systems that are water source heat pumps, which if you're not familiar with that, it requires extensive trenching and laying of pipe, which creates an incredible efficiency in energy usage, but it costs more upfront. But they're building that into the plans as part of the green initiative. So water source heat pumps are pretty common, as I look at all the project designs. Down the road, big payout. But the other piece on it is, kind of back to that conversation, the challenge with energy is, we're going to build more space with this bond issue. Not huge more space, because the next one actually has a lot more space into that, but hopefully the savings pay for the new space. And the other issue is, we continue to have issues with increasing devices, and devices draw more energy. And so we have to, we have to be more efficient, because we'll have more space to heat and air condition. Just for example, we had 18 schools that still had window units, is that correct, Mr. Warnke? So those schools now won't have window units, they'll have entire gyms now that are air-conditioned. And so we're going to have increases in cost for gyms that right now, and by the way, those gyms are hot when the school year starts. So those staff, the staff in those buildings, they are excited to get gyms that are air-conditioned. But we have at least 18 that have no air conditioning in it. So on one hand, we're saving energy, but on the other hand, you're going to see it spike up, because we have more conditioned air across the district with the bond issue. And we have more devices that are part of kind of where we're going as well, and devices also are energy users. But you can't avoid it, I mean, that's, and you can't avoid the air-conditioned space, and those schools are saying, "We're glad you're not avoiding it, because we're tired of those sweaty gyms that just have nothing but fans in them," which is what they have today. So there's kind of a twofold on that. We better save energy, because we're going to use more energy, because more space is being conditioned, air-conditioned, and more devices and other things that use energy. So it's kind of a twofold piece on that.
Mr. Scanlon.
Just had a question, a couple of questions for clarification. So the Green Schools Initiative, is that more like operational, how the recycling goes, the water usage? It's not necessarily the building phase, it's more the operational phase of day-to-day?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that the Green Schools Initiative is really designed to engage buildings in having students, staff, administration, teachers play a role in making their building more energy-efficient, more water-efficient, recycling more. There are clearly, you know, there's an overlap in a lot of that activity. It is not designed to go through every building and do an energy audit, and identify where we need a new boiler, new chiller, so on and so forth. It's very operational-based and behavior-based, I think it's fair to say.
Okay. And then the awards that you're talking about, are those just awards that your firm is coming up with for the district to...
The Green Urban Awards? Those are national awards. So there's a fairly rigid process by which schools can apply, there are three pillars. There's kind of the environmental side, there's the health side, and then there's the academics. So schools put together a pretty long application, submit that to the State Department, and then the Nebraska State Department of Education calls through any applications at the state level, and then sends recommendations to the National Department of Education. And then there are, you know, a ballpark roughly, I don't know, 40 to 60 schools nationally that get designated as Green Urban Award winners on an annual basis. So it's, we have nothing to do with it, we help write the applications, but that's it. It's very much a national award program.
And how much does that cost the district, or is it, do we have a grant?
It's man-hours.
Man-hours?
Yeah.
And I don't know, I hate to make the meeting longer, but I know Lisa Utterback could probably tell you at some point, she actually, when she was principal, took students there, and I don't know if you had a fundraiser for that, Lisa, but that was, took students to meet Secretary of Education Duncan, right?
Yes.
Took students to the White House, yep. It was a big deal. It was in all the papers.
Yeah.
What we did is, through the work of our teachers, is they submitted the application to the State of Nebraska, and Miller Park was nominated as a Nebraska Green School Award winner. And I believe Lothrup and King Science Center also were Nebraska winners that year. Unbeknownst to us, the state then took the applications and sent them to Washington, DC, and we were nominated as one of the first national Green School Award winners. And so when I was asked to come and accept the award, I said not without the building engineer and the teachers and the students that were responsible. And so we worked with some other departments to get the money to go. And went out there and looked at a lot of the monuments and learned a lot about history. But prior to going, the kids actually visited throughout the year a recycling center and learned about recycling. And so it was a wonderful effort within the community, and I'll tell you, they're going strong. They're just really about recycling, and it's empowered me as an educator to be a recycler as well in my home. So I believe Gomez went this summer, too. I believe Mr. Campan was a winner this year and went out there in Washington, DC. I'm not sure if he took students, but it was a way to acknowledge our students for the work that they did and the community, and spotlight that hard work does pay off. So, any questions?
Nope. I was just, I'm just trying to distinguish between the operational type green initiative and then the building, that you can get like a LEED Platinum and a LEED Silver. Those are totally separate.
Okay, right.
Okay. And do you, I guess, yeah, I don't have any more questions for you.
I learned a lot about the geothermal system.
We can talk offline about that if you want. Do you guys have anything to do with the LEED Silver or LEED Platinum? That's completely separate.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing an update from last year, so that's wonderful. All right. We're going to move on now to what was J1E, 2014 Bond Program Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And I think we have a couple of folks here from the Bond Oversight Committee, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Turnquist here.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Woody Bradford and Nicole Neves.
Neves.
Neves. From our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, who are loyal attendees at those meetings, the fourth Wednesday of every month, who will just give you an update in their own words.
Well, first of all, thanks for letting us be here tonight. We are basically going along the lines of developing a, and learning the system and plans that have been put in place for us to be able to properly evaluate what our charge is. And we're doing pretty well, I think. At least I, if I can get there, I know everybody is somewhat ahead of me. So I'm feeling very comfortable about where we are, because I understand the system that's set up, it's an open system, it's, we can evaluate, in fact, you can get so carried away that you could, you could get right down to every, any school you wanted to, you could be able to evaluate where it is at any particular time. And of course, as the data comes in, it's going to be able to increase our knowledge. Two other points. The website goes up and is up, and I think that will allow everybody in this community, if they wanted, to get involved in gathering data as to what we're doing. That's, I think, a fabulous thing. The other thing that I think is great is that Jacobs Academy and the effect that it's having on the ability of those contractors who lacked a lot of the basic skills to get jobs in this, in this program, to be able to come on board. And that, I think, has been fabulous. Nicole, you're on.
Yeah, to follow up on that, the Economic Inclusion Plan that they've, that we hear a lot about every meeting, has gone a long way in terms of building the community. And so Jacobs has a forward perspective in terms of not just thinking about this program in these next couple of years and what we're going to do here, but, you know, actually making improvements to the community. So I'm pretty proud of that. And I did want to just mention, or at least give you a picture, the breadth of the information that we get each month spans from the, getting the big picture, for example, 35 projects are in the design stage right now, so we can have that, and we can look at that and go, okay, fine. Most of the work that will get done is in the design phase, so, you know, not everybody's out there in construction right now. But we also get into the nitty-gritty, into the little details and the weeds if we want to. Mrs. Fay, I believe you asked about green and sustainability and what Jacobs is doing. And one very interesting, well, specific example is that they, we discussed this last meeting, installation of LED lights in the schools, and that's definitely a green and acceptable way of, yeah, anyway. So, yeah, so we have the big picture, we have details, and they've been very, Jacobs has been very responsive to answering all of our questions, whatever we have, and whatever we throw at them.
Thank you so much for providing an update. Does anyone have any questions or anything specific? Oh, Mr. Stowe.
Put you guys in the hotspot. Do you guys feel like your committee should have a little bit more, I don't know, how would you say, oversight or ability to make more decisions or make decisions? I mean, I understand you, but it's just, you can answer it if you want, if not.
Well, you know, I see us as part of a team, really. I think you all have the oversight, I mean, you have the final decisions. We're to help you make your decisions and help this plan work. We'll be successful if this comes in at the right cost and frankly earns the trust of the community to be able to go for the second bond issue. That's what our job is.
Yeah. I think we've just positioned ourselves as a committee to be the outlet or the communicators in terms of making sure that the transparency that should be there for the community and for the board is there, and that Jacobs is presenting material in the way that is the most effective to get, to have that level of transparency. So that's, rather than decision-makers, we see ourselves as in that role. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I mean, it's, that answers my question.
Mr. Scanlon.
Having sit on the CBOC Committee through a lot of the meetings and everything, I think, you know, it is an oversight committee, but it's an advisory committee. And I think that question that come up at the beginning, you know, how much decision-making do they have? And, you know, I think a lot of members wisely said, you know, "We're just here to advise the board." And the board is the elected officials, the representation of the voters, and the ultimate decision does lie with this board. They can provide advice and everything, but I think the decision still rests on this board. And I think that was, you know, just kind of eye-opening, that, yeah, we did form this committee, but it is still, as elected officials, it's our responsibility to make that final decision.
I think we're also a conduit for questions, and, you know, as each individual school will go forward, there'll be a lot of questions, and we've been a conduit for that, too.
Well, we certainly appreciate the significant amount of time that you put into attending the meetings and listening and obtaining the information from Jacobs, and from what I understand, asking very thoughtful, thorough questions, and so we appreciate that. Did anyone else have any? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had the privilege of working with, this is my third Citizens Bond Oversight Committee in three different districts, and I will tell you that this is one of the most informed and knowledgeable group of people I've worked with. And I'm not being critical of my former citizens groups, but the level of understanding and knowledge in that room, as you well know, I mean, the questions are good questions, the level of understanding is high, and Jacobs is prepared for that, and they're prepared in the next meeting to answer whatever question comes out of that meeting. But I want the board to feel confident and comfortable with the citizens that are served on that committee. I know Mr. Scanlon would say the same thing. You have an outstanding group of community leaders who are knowledgeable, intelligent, and dedicated to this effort. It takes a lot of time and energy. Every month, they get and they could share with you... Every month they get and they could share with you a stack of new documents that they add to a notebook that continues to grow. And they read it, they know it, they understand it, they ask good questions when they come back, and they get questions from the community. So I just want to applaud them, thank them, and hopefully, hopefully allow the board to feel more confident in the citizens that are representing you and representing this school district on this advisory board. They clearly are dedicated to the mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to skip before we go to Jacobs. We're going to go to the Family Consumer Science Update. I think we have an out of town person here as well for that. So with that, we're going to go to what was J1G, Family Consumer Science Update. Dr. Kerberg.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. I'd love to set the stage as colleagues come forward. And I'll introduce them once they're comfortable in the front row. But I'd love to set the stage first, which is, we have had the opportunity to update our career education program over the last three years. So if we go back in time, it's 2011-12, and we started the process when we were doing the strategic plan and we did a five-year study of where we needed to go. We did some revisioning, we got a state grant, and we were able to look at what we needed to do to improve career education courses in the Omaha Public Schools. Then after that, we did a curriculum audit just in career education. And then after that, of course, the strategic plan dovetailed that information into it, specifically looking at what our community was telling us, what our business partners were telling us, our advisory committees were telling us. And we did a presentation to the board. So now you're up to speed to May of 2015. So after the presentation in May, we had a sequence of events we didn't plan for, just going to say that quite directly. There was unfortunately a perception or misinformation that family consumer science teachers were losing their jobs, that that program was going to be eliminated and there wouldn't be curriculum in that area anymore. And of course, you know, having received that presentation, we were updating the curriculum and we were aligning it to the state course of study in that particular career field. So we sent out a memo right away to teachers saying, here's what's happening, the curriculum's being updated, not eliminated. We met with teachers throughout the summer. We had a chance in August to meet with all the family consumer science teachers at once on Curriculum Day. There's 32 of them. And then we did it a second time in September. Mr. Evans actually joined me for the second opportunity. Again, just to clearly say that again, because we knew from the public to be heard that there were people out there in the community that were coming to the board saying, we're eliminating a curricular area. So we wanted to make that clear. So when you look at your attachments, the first two are the memos we sent out, but the third one kind of updates the things we've done to support family consumer science. And we wanted you not to hear from us tonight. You've heard the big presentation. We actually invited our colleagues who are family consumer science teachers to talk with you. And we're just delighted that they joined. Before I introduce them and have them make comments, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge we're very happy to have Dr. Corey Epler. If I can have you maybe stand or give a hello. Dr. Epler is the Senior Administrator, the Director of Curriculum Instruction for NDE. And then we have our own colleagues with us tonight, Ken Spellman and Susan Christopherson and Karen Spencer May, if you have other questions as well. But in the audience, I think I'm going to start with NDE, if I might. We're very pleased to have Alison Kreifels with us. She works under the leadership of Corey, and she's responsible for many areas, but the one that aligns with family consumer science that she supervises is health services and edu, oops, human services and education. Thank you. So with that, I'll let Alison jump in. And again, we are updating our family consumer science courses to align with the state's course of study in this area. So it's not about elimination, it's about alignment and updating. I just want to be clear as I can on that.
Thank you, Dr. Kerberg. And as she said, my name is Alison Kreifels and I serve as a Family and Consumer Sciences Career Field Specialist and FCC LA State Advisor. And as she said, working to align to state standards, what does that mean? And so that's kind of what I want to share with you is, what is the direction of family and consumer sciences in the state of Nebraska? Included in those attachments are a few things that I've put together that I'll reference kind of throughout. One of the first things I want to talk about is what we in career education call programs of study. And that may be something that you're familiar with and maybe not. Programs of study is truly a guide to prepare students for the next level. What that next level is could be a career, it could be post-secondary certification, it could be a four-year degree, any of those things. Because we believe that if we can prepare those students in high school for whatever that next level is going to be, they're going to be better prepared than if they were to go in just kind of cold with no idea of what their plan is. But through those sequence of three to four courses, they're meant to guide and prepare students for gainful employment or post-secondary education. When we say prepare them, we mean with skills, with knowledge, experiences, all of those things, not just a standard, but also those outside the classroom experiences that they can have. Nebraska Career Education has designed these programs of study with input from business and industry. We then take those, that input from business and industry, and the teachers in the state develop the standards for it. So my role is not really the development of standards, it's to help teachers understand and provide them with resources that they can utilize. Teachers are expected to teach 90% of the standards. That's kind of the guideline that we set, knowing that there are some differences in what teachers really find important, what they maybe want to emphasize more in one area than what they do in another. But we do say that 90% of the standards need to be taught in order to call a course that course. So if you're going to call a course child development, you have to teach 90% of those standards that have been identified. Programs of study also cross into other content areas. So for example, a skilled and technical sciences program of study may include a family and consumer sciences course. A health sciences course may include a class taught by a science teacher. And then in family and consumer sciences, we have social sciences courses. We have what we call capstone courses in psychology or AP psychology. So it's not just one teacher teaching everything, it may, it may go into other departments as well. One of the documents that was shared with you is some information from the Department of Labor about overall job growth. And what I've done is I've taken that information and narrowed it down to family and consumer sciences careers. So based on the Department of Labor data, job growth in Omaha Consortium is expected to grow about 12%. Based on what we know, family consumer sciences careers are expected to maintain that 12% or even outperform. We had two areas in particular that I found interesting when I was going through the data is counseling and mental health fields, and also social service occupations are expected to grow about 19%. Other areas that we know are growing is education and training and early childhood education continuing at about the 12% rate. Another document that you have that's really important when we talk about programs of study is post-secondary opportunities. We don't want a student to end in high school and have no direction. We want to help with that transition. We feel that programs of study do that. So one of the things that we've put together is, so now that you've completed high school, what's your next step? And you'll see a graph that includes almost every post-secondary institution in the state of Nebraska, and also what programs they offer as they relate to family and consumer sciences. So you'll see things marked M for a minor, you'll see Cs for concentrations. So they might major in public administration with a concentration in national security, for example. You'll see majors marked with a large X. You'll see a lot of the ones that are larger institutions are marked that way because they're able to offer a lot more. We have different degrees, different certificates at every post-secondary institution, and quite a few offered at the school, post-secondary institutions offered here in Omaha. The last thing that I wanted to share with you is, I've had the opportunity to sit in on a few of the meetings that have taken place with your family consumer sciences professionals and your school principals. Had the opportunity to visit North High School and Benson High School. And really the message that I've shared with them is the data that's, that's been presented to you, but also more importantly, family and consumer sciences is not meant to be this kind of floating out there thing. And we want to anchor it. That's the term I keep going back to, is we want to anchor those courses to what's already happening in the school. What fits best, what aligns best to the theme, to the purpose of that school, and really deciding what programs of study can we offer? In Aquest, they kind of talked about ESCE. In career education, we focus on what we call the Perkins Act. That's what finances a lot of what we do. And one of the things that's part of Perkins is providing a program of study. And schools, what it's looking like is schools are really going to need to offer at least one program of study in each course area. So in family and consumer sciences, at each school, there would have to be a program of study. So as, as we're watching how that all shakes out, we really want to hit home the importance of these programs of study, and not only just for the financing, but because of what we know it works best for students. We know that by sending students on this path, we're preparing them for the next level in the best way that we can. So I will say that it's, it's been so encouraging to talk with the teachers and talk with the principals, had some really just visionary conversations with them about what they get to do and what they can do. It's not, so many times in education, it's kind of, we have the have to conversations, I have to do this, I have to do that. So it's been really great to get to have some of those get to conversations with your staff. So that's everything that I have. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I'd love to tag to that. Alison just mentioned that she's met with some of our high school principals, family consumer science teachers and professionals. We're going to all seven high schools. We've gone to four. We have three left during the month of October. We actually sit down and we say, you're updating your family consumer science curriculum. Let's look at your magnet theme or your area of emphasis, your college and career-ready academy program. How do the family consumer science courses support that within the NDE course of study that's outlined? So we're actually getting input from every building about designing their family consumer science curriculum based on what meets their need within that school. And I'll use Bryan High as an example. Obviously, they're, they're very interested in agri-science for culinary versus a traditional foods program. So they're blending that as an example. So I hope that helps give you a sense. And then the other thing Alison mentioned was the Perkins Funds, which are the federal dollars that support us. We've put $75,000 last spring into family consumer science for professional development. We're supporting teachers to go to the state conference. And I think we have 420 hours set aside for teachers to do curriculum writing for family consumer science. So again, it's about updating the curriculum, not taking away and not having replacement courses as courses get updated.
Absolutely. There's exciting things happening in family and consumer sciences, and I think that's reflected in a lot of our standards. We will actually undergo a standards revision this summer, and so we'll see kind of what comes out of that in terms of what our business and industry input, where we, that's where we start in, in post-secondary and see what, see what comes out of that. But I'm excited about the things that I'm hearing, not only happening in Nebraska, but just around the nation in terms of family and consumer sciences and what we can do. So.
I'd like to give a shout out. I think I saw Crystal Kolb, if she can just wave, is she still here? Crystal's actually been working on one of the state committees. She's another family consumer science teacher, Bryan High. And you should be talking about the Bryan High curriculum, not me. But yes, so thank you for that. And by the way, it's Ken Spellman, Susan Christopherson going out and working with each high school and their team. And we have a couple of teachers I'd love to, we were very pleased this summer to have Candita Kadar, did I get the Kadar right? Thank you. She usually goes by Candy, but I like the full name much better, from Central High School, just to talk with you. And I'm also thankful, Burke High School, we have Andrea Burton, who we got to meet with this summer, as well as in August and September. So please, come for it and share whatever you'd like to with our board.
Good evening, President Gadding and Superintendent Evans and other school board members. My name is Andrea Burton, and for the past 12 years, I have been a family consumer science teacher at Burke High School. Couple of days ago, I received a call from Mr. Spellman asking me if I'd be willing to come and give you an update on what's been happening with the family consumer science program. Last spring during several of the OPS Board meetings and over the summer, family and consumer science teachers and former students and supporters of the OPS program that were involved in the food services, nutrition services, clothing and textiles programs were involved and came to address our concerns after we were informed that they could possibly be removed from the district. So I want to tell you thank you for listening to our concerns and allowing us to share that information. After those meetings were held, family and consumer science teachers, there were three of us in particular, that were allowed to meet with Mr. Spellman, Dr. Kerberg, Kevin Johnson, and also Mrs. Christopherson. We met with them on July 15th. And at that meeting, we were able to clear up a lot of misunderstandings, remove a lot of the language that was used that would reflect a large number of our students as well as programs within our schools. So tonight, I come to you to say that because of our concern with our program, that we're actually able to give a very positive update as to what is going on. And our continued goal is in order to grow our programs and to enhance the family consumer science programs within the Omaha Public School District. We join Mr. Spellman in creating a model for other areas, not just within the state of Nebraska, but also nationwide in order to improve family consumer sciences. And the three teachers at the meeting also were welcoming and received a verbal apology from the committee on the information that was presented to teachers in May of this year. During our meeting on July the 15th, it was noted that the communication regarding the issue was shared with the principals and curriculum specialists in each of the buildings, but that message, the first intent may have not been relayed appropriately. So some incorrect wording may have been used when the message was delivered. The teachers shared our concerns, shared our questions, and we were able to work together with the committee to offer some suggestions towards a realignment within the Nebraska Department of Education. In order to maintain that positive working relationship, Mr. Spellman has worked with us to provide the following information with us. No changes will be made to the employees in the area for the next two to three years, and family consumer science teachers will not be losing their jobs or their placements within their schools. Communication within the family consumer science teachers regarding the adjustments to the Nebraska Department of Education guidelines to the programs will also be utilized. And an update to clear up any misinterpretation of eliminating the classes was provided to all family consumer science secondary ed teachers at the August 6th Curriculum Day. That was held at South High, and both Dr. Spellman, I'm sorry, Mr. Spellman and Dr. Kerberg were present at that meeting with us. On September the 18th, Mr. Spellman, Mr. Evans, and Dr. Kerberg also attended the High School Family and Consumer Science Curriculum Evening. And at that meeting, we received additional resources and information on how they plan to proceed with this realignment. As a result of our meetings over the summer, and also in both August and September, our family and consumer science program within our district, we were also invited to attend the state conference that will be held in Gretna, along with the Nebraska Department of Education. Information regarding that conference was sent to each high school, and teachers from each high school were given information to invite them to attend the conference. Later on this week, I will actually be able to participate in that conference and be able to learn more about how the Nebraska Department of Education is going to be aligning that program and working with the FCS programs in Omaha Public Schools to implement those requirements in our classrooms. Group of teachers, as those of us moving forward would like to continue to meet with Mr. Spellman in order to ensure that our teachers are updated on the program. And we would also be open to offering suggestions to make our program here within the Omaha Public Schools District the best that it can be. So thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Candy Kadar. Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Evans, President Gadding and school board members, name is Candy Kadar. I am the current Family and Consumer Science Department Head at Central High School. So my role is a little bit different than Ms. Burton's, so I have a little bit more insight on the administrative side of family consumer science. My goal this evening is to share with you updated information about our program and proposed realignment with Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee proposal to realign OPS, Family and Consumer Science Department with the Department of Education Guidelines. As my colleague Ms. Burton mentioned, we both participated in the meetings with Mr. Spellman, Dr. Kerberg, and others in July, and curriculum meetings for all family and consumer science teachers on August 6th and September 18th. My role as department head allows me to attend and participate in additional meetings, as well as receive information provided to curriculum specialists by Mr. Spellman. The information The information given to curriculum specialists is expected to be provided to our teachers in family consumer science within a certain timeframe as it impacts our program. I am now participating in CTE, which is Career Technical Education Curriculum Specialist Meetings. To date, I have attended three. From these meetings, I am able to better understand the curriculum instruction assessment goal and aligning the OPS Family Consumer Science Program with an Department of Education, Human Sciences, and Family Consumer Sciences Education. While communicating is key to improving our program, we thank Mr. Spellman and Dr. Kerberg for acknowledging the miscommunication to family consumer science teachers in May. However, our program is stronger and will continue to grow through collaboration with our teachers and our director. The meetings during Curriculum Day were helpful in providing an update to all family consumer science teachers that there will be no changes to their job during the next two to three years. Updated communication is important for our new teachers who are beginning their career in family consumer science as well as our tenured teachers. We believe Mr. Spellman will work with us to keep up the line of communication open and ensure that all family consumer science teachers are receiving his messages sent to principals, curriculum specialists, and department heads. I am currently in the process of working with Central High School teachers in my department to start thinking about the career programs of studies that will work for our students at Central. Our teachers will look at the Department of Education Family Consumer Science Content Standards and determine how they will align with the current classes that we offer at Central. From these conversations, we will offer suggestions and address concerns to Mr. Spellman. I am certain that we will offer courses to our students that will align with OPS Strategic Plan to ensure an alignment with new and existing programs that meet labor market and increase the percentage of students' graduation with college credit and/or industry certification. As we continue looking for suggestions, address concerns, review data, as well as notes from the National Consultant, we believe that it will help us drive our conversation between NDE, CIA, and Central. And I have been requested, and I have requested Dr. Bennett that I be part of that conversation. We are proud to say that we currently in our department at Central High School offer three courses that offer dual enrollment opportunities for our students within Metro and UNO. Burke also offers the dual enrollment opportunities with Metro as well. While there are others in the district, Ms. Burton and I are sharing tonight what we do at our schools. We appreciate the invitation to provide you with an update. If asked, we will be willing to work with others to invite them to share what is going on in their schools. Lots of things are exciting, happening at high schools in family consumer science, and thank you for your time allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
From the teacher's side. So are there, just to get an understanding, are there department heads for family consumer science at every high school? No?
No.
How many high schools have?
One.
Okay.
That's me.
Okay, so that was one of my questions. And so at Burke, you are the, you are one of the family consumer science teachers who has taken a lead in making sure that the information is disseminated. So my question is, so when Mr. Spellman and Mrs. Christopherson were out, did they visit with all of the consumer family science teachers and the principal and the curriculum specialist? Or I just want to understand how that all, for each of the meetings that happened at each of the schools, how that works? Sorry.
Good evening. We've been out to three schools. That's Northwest, North, and South High School. We sent an invitation out to the schools requesting the meeting. We kind of let the schools determine who was going to attend. At the meeting at North High School, for example, it was the principal, curriculum specialist for career education, and then two of the family consumer science teachers. At Benson High School, we met with the principal, the curriculum specialist, the teacher. Family consumer science teacher that day did not have a sub, and so we weren't able to meet. And so it just kind of, we're leaving it up to the schools.
I just want to say, and leaving it up to the schools, this is the first initial meeting that we're having with them. And so we kind of just talk through in generalities like we're talking now, and then we ask them to make sure that they're having that conversation and bringing everyone to the table that they want to bring to the table, to put together that action plan. It's one of the handouts that you've received. And then what we'll do is we'll come back and visit and talk about where they're at in their planning stages, how we can help with professional development, what do we need to look at for financial support, and just kind of going from there. That's just the initial kickoff meeting to kind of put some documents in their hands to jumpstart their conversations. Could that help?
Okay, that's, no, that's perfect. That helps. And so as we move forward, I think the important piece is including the family consumer science teachers, because that was part of the maybe miscommunication piece that happened in the spring. A specific question from Ms. Merrick, she's not here tonight, but one of the questions she asked, and I think if you go to the last document in the piece, and then also information she had requested, her question was specific to North and noticing that they had fewer students participating this year. Was that similar to where they were in the past? Or has there been a change in the family consumer science enrollment?
Are you talking the 15, 16 enrollment data?
Yes.
Okay. I left my copy at my chair. But North High School, and like I said, as we've had these meetings, not only we're looking at the Nebraska Department of Education programs to study, we're also taking into account magnet themes, career academy themes, high-wage, high-demand type of data. And so North High School had a retirement last year. I believe they went from three to two family consumer science for the 15, 16 school year. So that's probably, that's reflected in that loss of participation.
Okay. And that was one of her questions? Okay. I guess I would, I don't know if anybody else has questions, but I would like to hear from the teachers, any suggestions that you would offer up, if you have any, or if we're good in the way we're moving forward, or?
I would probably just say is, the communication part is super key to make sure that all family consumer sciences teachers are getting the information and being part of the conversation. When we look for that realignment, it's crucial that there is a family consumer science teacher sitting in on that, because we're in the forefront, we're working with our kids every day. We know what they need, their families need. So we have that, we need that input, just so it's us, it's our voice, but also our students' voice speaking as well. So I think that is just really important, is the communication key. And I think that's getting, that's getting better, so.
Okay, great. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to reassure staff that we are intending to do that. I've already spoken with Dr. Kerberg, and we want, we want and need your voices. So we appreciate it, Candy. Thanks for being willing to say that publicly, too. That's helpful for us, and I know that's not always the easiest thing. So thank you for sharing that with us, and I want to make that public commitment that we want and need your voices, and we will be reaching out to every single school. So thank you for that.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here and for the efforts that have been made since spring. We really appreciate it. With that, we will move to Mr. Summers', J1E 2014 Bond Program Jacob's Bond Project Update.
Since I've been fortunate enough to participate in a few other agenda items tonight, I'll try to be concise with this bond update. We'll go ahead and move right in. Similar to the previous updates that I provided, the same format tonight, some accomplishments, an overall status of the program financially and schedule-related, some additional information on bond communication, specifically the new website that we've been talking about and you heard a little bit about from CBOC. And then, of course, continuing to underscore some challenges that we'll face as we move Again, I mentioned last time we were here, we were able to transition everyone back at the beginning of school safely. We participated in a lot of open house discussions to make sure that we maximize the opportunity to communicate with parents and students of the type of work that's going to happen and the timeline of the work that's going to happen at their location. Still have 54 active projects, and as Nicole mentioned, there's 35 in design, 16 are actually in construction, and three are in the bid and award phase. We're currently evaluating some bids that recently came in on our projects. So next month, when we talk about this information, some of this data will change. The total project value of those that are active of the 54 projects is $151 million. And again, we always like to provide an update on the economic inclusion work that we've been doing. $36 million in contracts have been issued total for the bond program. 2.9 million of those contracts have been committed to Tier 1 vendors, and 811,000 committed to Tier 2 vendors for a total of about 10.21%. Again, so that's trending above the 7% target that's been established. Just moving into the program financials and schedule, currently, the commitments that have been made, again, these are purchase orders and/or contracts that have been written, total about 10% of the total program or $42.7 million. And the district's paid out invoices in the amount of $15.9 million. Program contingency, always want to provide a quick snapshot or an update to that, hasn't changed from the last time we visited. Budget's still the same, of course. The approved contingency is a use of $708,000. We're forecasting a need for $3.45 million. So a total forecasted need along with what's been approved is $4.1 million, which is about almost 1%. And again, just to refresh everyone's memory, the way that's been budgeted, it's 9% of the total program. So currently, with all the active work that we have, we're trending significantly under that contingency, program contingency budget. However, I will say that while we work through all the projects, whenever there is a need for the use of it, we're not bashful to come to Dr. Turnquist and follow the process to access those dollars to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the campus, the community, and of course, the scope of the bond program as a whole. On the program schedule, again, we continue to track on schedule. We are making some adjustments mainly, again, around the bid dates and the timeframes of those necessary to make sure we get into the market at the right opportunity. We have several projects. 10 projects are going to bid starting at the end, mid to the end of November, all the way through the first of the year and into February. So we feel like that's the best opportunity for the district to get the maximum amount of coverage. And there have been some recent projects in the area that have bid, and we're getting information, the designers on that project are working for the district, and so is the contractor. So we're trying to make sure we have a good understanding of what their design consisted of and how it mimics, or how it's different from the current projects that are being designed under the bond program, just to make sure we can continue to dial in potential costs. And then, of course, from a program schedule perspective, we're continuing to look at swing space utilization opportunities where we can maximize the efficiency of getting onsite in its entirety and minimizing phased projects where possible. So I'm just going to move into the bond, the communications piece. We did, we did push out a new website on the 15th, but I think that was just a few days prior to our last, a few days after our last update. But it's this OPS dot, or sorry, bond OPS.org. You can still get to it through the main OPS website as well. Similar information that's always been out there, but in a much easier format, much easier to access it. So the areas of information, again, will include pre-bond, general bond, the doing business portion, which really is about economic inclusion, standard, standard contracts, and what it takes to get on the vendor list, for example, with the district. Some areas that are specific for parents and students, bond news information, and then, of course, how to contact us. It gives them an easy way to provide feedback to an email that our team monitors, and then we're able to make sure that the folks, if there are any questions that come to the website, we can address. Some of the benefits of this particular website is you can seek out school-specific information. It's not just general bond information or these types of updates. And we'll look at some of that on the next few slides. We're working on the opportunity that the website provides us to make announcements. So you can subscribe to certain criteria on the website, and then if there's an update, it can send you an email and say, go check out current bidding opportunities, for example. And you can click on that link, and it'll pull you in. So we can, we can communicate in a two-way format versus someone coming and searching for information. We can push data to them as well. So that's a component that we haven't quite mastered yet, but we're working on that. Of course, any information shared with the Board of Education or the CBOC updates and reports, those are all posted. And then the other piece is the data that we're going to be getting back from, the number of visitors and bounce rates and all kinds of other great information that we can use to tailor the website to serve the communication purpose best. So again, just provided a couple of screenshots and some bullets of the information underneath each heading. I mentioned, I'm not going to read them line by line, but the general bond information really is where we house all of the formal plans, if you will, the economic inclusion plans there, master schedule, program handbook that we've shared with everybody. The doing business bullet provides us an opportunity to post new contracting opportunities, our standard agreements that the district utilizes, and those other types of information similar to that. And then the really nice piece, again, I mentioned, for the parents and students, you have the ability to go in and just look at Ponca, if that's the information you want, or Crest Ridge, or Bel Ryan, et cetera. The information that we produce as a result of the CBOC meeting actually moves right into this system, so we don't have to do multiple entry points, which is, just from a staffing and a workforce perspective, a really efficient way to do that. So we've been able to connect with IT, which they've been a huge help on this, and I appreciate that. And so has district communications. But it really minimizes a lot of the data entry that can be having multiple systems to update. We can suck the information in, which is just a really nice way to do it. This here is really a snapshot, and again, I encourage everyone to take a look at the actual website if you haven't had a chance to yet. But this is Ponca Elementary. And again, all of the information that's provided to the CBOC members or the board members, it's all available here for the public as far as the general updates, scope of work, project budget information. And then there's a really nice feature where we can post videos or photos, updates to the projects. The other thing that's nice about the website is, and I don't know the exact word for this, someone told me it, but depending on the device you use, whether it's a phone, or a tablet, or a large computer, it'll resize the website. So it's not really difficult to navigate on different devices, and it works pretty well. So that's another really nice thing about the platform that the district's utilized for this webpage. So, and then I mentioned some information on the data. So on September 15th, the district made this live. It had, when I put this information together about two weeks ago, which was close to the end of September, there was already 2,600 page views. We can tell how long folks are spending on each page and the session, and all kinds of other data. And next month, when I provide an update, I can tell you a little bit more specifically about it, because I'm getting some education on it. But again, it's in the same light that we talk about when we get into the financials or any of these project information. We can get really, really granular with the information to try to determine the best way to communicate it. So a huge benefit that we didn't have in the past that with this new format will have. Just a quick snapshot over the next 90 days. Again, we continue to work on phase construction, putting a lot of pressure on the design teams to make sure that they're hitting their submittal dates and their milestones, and that's to ensure that we hit our bid windows that are really critical. I mentioned previously about identifying and analyzing the swing space opportunities. We continue to work with all the different district departments that are involved in that conversation to make sure, whether it's transportation, nutrition services, operations, any swing space opportunities that we look at, we want to make sure can satisfy everybody's needs. And then, of course, the big, the big challenge really that's coming is all the moves that are associated in the summer. So not only is there a lot of pressure on the district from a bond program perspective of moving some facilities around, but also create configuration, some of the other things that are currently active are going to be pulled on some of those similar resources. So we're really trying to get out in front, six, eight months in front, to plan all of those days out over the summer to make sure we can maximize the efficiency there. Long-term, similar as before- Long-term, similar as before, again, there's a lot of work in the market. We're doing a lot of studying on similar projects that have recently bid, what's going on in the next year to try to make sure that we put the bond program in the best procurement opportunity possible, with the idea of not slowing down. Again, there's fixed time and fixed dollars, so we're trying to maximize both of those. And we do have this target of being nearly 50 percent complete in September of '17. And that is all I have for this evening.
All right. Mr. Scanlon.
Could you just clarify to the public for the completion of almost 50 percent of the program? Does that mean 50 percent of the projects will be complete, or what exactly?
Correct.
Does that mean?
50 percent of the projects, correct. So again, you know, there's a lot of scale to those. So if you recall, this next summer, so we had Quick Start this past summer, this next summer has a similar grouping of projects. So a lot of that 50 percent volume is not necessarily dollars, it's number of projects, because there's a lot of smaller projects from a dollar perspective.
Just had a quick question. And maybe I just didn't see it, but on the bond website, which is great, by the way, to have that out there, are drawings being uploaded as those are developed?
Yeah, so what we're, the rule we're trying to follow is we want to try to wait till the board approves them, you know, just to make sure that that's the right protocol to follow. But the intent is to be able to post renderings or maybe a few floor plans, similar to what we presented at the Bel Ryan Community Meeting. But we don't want to get into posting sets and the whole spec, just because of the volume of the bandwidth. So, but I think Mr. Scanlon had that question previously, and that is the intent, is to be able to provide renderings and information that then would be available for the public or principals or anyone else that would need it. They could easily grab it from the website as a PDF or something.
Thank you for getting the website up, and I know I went out and looked at my schools and played around a little bit, and it's very informative, but it's also easy to navigate. And so I appreciate that. Dr. Turnquist.
Thank you, Ms. Gadding. I just wanted to add that that website was a beautiful combination of work between Jacobs and our team and Mr. Dixon's IMS staff, as well as District Information and Todd Andrews. But the IMS staff had an opportunity to do some truly creative, in-depth work. I think they liked doing it hard work, though it was, because it turned into a marvelous vehicle for communication, and we're very grateful to IMS for that.
Great. If there's no other questions, we will move on. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for presenting. And I just kicked myself out. So I think now we're to truce and see.
Good evening, members of the board, President Gadding, Vice President Williams. My name is Jerry Corner. I'm coordinator of Community School and Family Engagement for the district, and I have with me two very important individuals, Dr. Michelle Simpson and Dr. Tyree Sikora. Tyree, if you could stand up. I'd like to introduce you to Tyree. She's the newest member of our team in the Office of Community School and Family Engagement, and she is our office administrator. So in 2013, parents and advocacy groups voiced opposition to the Nebraska absenteeism law and sought to have it repealed. At the direction of State Senator Brad Ashford, residents were advised to look to their local school boards for solutions. On May 19th, the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education voted to accept revised OPS attendance policy 6.2.7. As part of those policy changes, decisions were made as to items that would not be counted as worthy of a county attorney referral. Some of those items include school-sponsored activities, bereavement, court and/or legal appearances, and when the parent notifies the school that the student is ill. In addition, as a part of that conversation and policy changes, unexcused absences would be, would not include, excuse me, unexcused absences would include being absent, the school has not been notified of the absence, and they did not meet the definition of an excused absence, the student is truant, neither the family nor the school official knows the student's whereabouts, or it's unverified, no one has contacted the school, or they have been unable to confirm the reason for the absence. With that, I'm going to bring up Dr. Michelle Simpson.
So what you have here is a quick breakdown, a comparison of the 2013-14 school years to the 2014-15 school year. And so what we did was we looked at the average daily attendance rate, and it was 94.2 percent for the previous school year, and then when you moved to 2014-15, it went down by .02 percent to 94 percent. Also, looking at chronic absences, we had an increase of 313 students who were considered chronically absent, and that's missing 10 or more school days, regardless of the reason, whether you're sick or just skipping, you're still missing instruction. And so we consider those to be chronically absent. And among those who were considered to be chronically absent, on average, they missed So then taking a look at just those who had illnesses or they were considered a medical absence, the mean for illness was 2.55 for the 2013-14 school year, and that increased to 2.78 for the 2014-15 school year. And then looking at the medical absences, it went from 1.02 to 1.1, both reflected And then when we look at the referrals to the county attorney, you will notice a sharp decrease. So I'm not sure if you can see that, it's a little small, but that shows a three-year rate. So from 2012-13 school year, it was at 2510, and then it dropped down to 1,798. And then for the last school year after you all made the change, it dropped down to 810 referrals to the county attorney. Any questions about the numbers? Not the reasons, just the numbers.
We'll let you finish, and then, are you, are you done? No?
With that, in 2014, schools were directed to establish attendance teams. Those goals, to proactively support the needs of students and families, to encourage OPS's compliance with Nebraska mandatory attendance law, and to monitor five- and 10-day milestones using attendance letters and forms program known as ALF. At this time, recommendations are that we make no changes to this policy and that we continue to monitor trends. Are there any questions?
You know, the one thing that I would just note is, well, first of all, board officers, we thought we should put this back on, just like we did the eligibility for athletics, because these were big changes that we created in policy, significantly different than where it had been a few years ago. And I think one of the questions that I had, I had a concern potentially, was if the illness, medical absence number was going to increase significantly, but I don't really see that that was a big part of it. So I guess, back to the numbers question, what, if that didn't increase significantly, what was a driver in the 19.4 days? And were those, and maybe I missed this, were those absences that were excused, or were those unexcused?
So the way that this was pulled, it was based on the fall membership, so those students who were considered in the district at the, like, what is it, like the last Friday in September or something like that. And then from there, if they were considered to have gone through the whole school year at a certain date in May or the end of April. Casey Hughes pulled this data from me, and one of the conversations we had was, in some of the schools, there are a lot of errors in the way that they input it. And so there was only one field that I could really trust, and that was a total days absent. When you got down to the breakdown of the reasons why, some of them may have had an error like in a decimal point. And so one student showed as missing 537 days, and one student had like 636 days, not even possible. So when it comes down to that breakdown, I'm not completely sure of those reasons. And, but we did take out those who may have been in like DCYC or any kind of outside program, so they weren't included in that, and that really did help, because the way that those programs calculate is almost like, it's like a running total, which also could have affected the absences, because it's like it never ends. And so when you get to the point of getting to the minuteness of the reasons why, I'm not completely sure.
That's a very honest answer. I guess my question then would be, is it training with staff at the building levels to ensure that the data's being put in, or what?
That's not my ministry.
Right, so where do we need to go from here?
I think they can answer that for you.
Yes. So as you know, 2014 was a year of transition. We went from SPA to SSL. We have both school support liaisons in those SSL schools to include designees in non-SSL schools. So the Office of Community School and Family Engagement did establish a comprehensive training agenda to ensure that those staff transitioning would be able to meet the needs of respective schools, to include designees meeting the needs of those non-SSL schools. Allow me to bring up Tyree Sikora. She served as an SSL last year. I believe she can speak a little further to the topic.
I do believe training is a huge part of it. And I think that there's been a lot of changes, not only in our district, but also with the statewide of how they're wanting to hear about attendance, even all the way to the county attorneys, and now how they're, the whole process that they're taking county attorneys is completely different than it was last year. So it's a whole new learning curve, it seems like, every single year to figure out what's the expectation of everybody that has their hands in it. So I think training is huge, as you were saying, not only for the SSLs, but the designees. I also am finding this year, in the position that I'm at, that training for secondary attendance, or tenant secretaries, is going to be a key part to it, too. So that way, everybody's on the same page as to what the expectations are to be able to take attendance accurately district-wide, not just school-by-school basis.
So is that something you're all, you all are implementing or working on?
Yes, we are. We are, yep. And I'm trying to work, like, game plan, definitely, but to get together with secretaries as to finding out like their frequently asked questions, and working with, coming up with, like a handbook, to be able to provide to new tenant secretaries that are coming in to be able to help support with that matter as well. And then for the SSLs and designees, it's not just the attendance piece, there's so much to learn in this position, and so definitely trying to do what we can to be able to help support, not only meetings here at the tech building, but going into the schools and sitting down with the staff at the schools to be able to help work through that.
Ms. Williams.
So not directly related, but as we're talking attendance, as you're kind of developing your game plan for moving forward, I'd really like to see, and this is kind of tied to transportation, but what are absences or late, you know, how many minutes are our students missing from transportation being late as well? So if you could kind of incorporate that as you, next year, come back with some more solid numbers of, because, you know, we'll ask more specific things of illnesses or family emergencies or whatever, but I'm just kind of curious to see, so I think that would be a great way to track, so we can kind of address that on the other side as well.
Perfect. And I'll have to work with IMS to figure out, and an infinite campus can do that, but we could definitely can look into that.
Perfect, thank you.
And I do think that was one of the issues when we started, was the fields weren't there for the tenant secretary standard. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Thank you very much, President Gadding. So, let me just pull this up, because I'm just trying to look at this. So for the team goals, what would be really helpful for me, and I'm harping on this, I've mentioned this in the past for when we have presentations at the board, I want to make sure that we're communicating to the public exactly what we are doing differently and/or the same, keeping, you know, the same, we're talking about what are the large, let's say, work streams of what you are doing to continue the upward trend, and then also what are the large work streams of things that you're changing as a result to address some of the gaps. And Ms. Gadding was harping or focusing on one, so that we can make sure we are improving that area. Because for proactively supporting the needs of students and families, I know that I'm going to get questions from the community on what that means, especially given some of the data, both to call out what we're doing well and to call out what we need to improve. So it would be helpful to include in this, and once we put it up, is to include more, more higher-level strategically, what are we doing to support the needs of students and families already, and what might be we doing differently to get to the goals. That's the first thing. The second one is, are we planning to include the goals from the strategic plan in this?
The goals from the strategic plan? This is in, this is with respect to policy 6.2.7 attendance, and as a district, we endeavor to improve across all areas. So I would have to say yes, if you were to ask me specifically, what are we doing? I could not answer that question at this moment.
Okay. So I brought this up when we were doing our finance and our budget conversation, that there are goals that we set as a district as a part of our strategic plan, we put them in a report card, and they're metrics that we, as a district, are aiming towards. One of the metrics is the percentage of students who are suspended, sorry, the percentage of students who are absent 10 or more days. My understanding is that would and could fall underneath this as a goal. I want us to get into a best practice that those goals that we set as a district, together, not me or anyone individually, are implemented in our updates for each of our teams, so we're getting updates relative to that, so that they're coming up and we can hold ourselves accountable to what we told the public. I'd love for you to include that measure.
Yes, sir.
And also for us to make sure we're looping back to that report card of goals, so that all of our teams are doing this, actually, and they're coming and bringing updates.
Mr. Snow.
Tony took some of my, took one of my questions. With this data, is there a way that you could break this down by male, female, and gender, I mean, male and female as well as race, with the referrals by school year? And another thing is, with the 810 that were referred, are we tracking to see if there's any similarity between them, and is there a plan to come up with, how do we reduce If not, we, just, for a future reference, for an update, to come up with something to kind of let me know, because if I'm giving a presentation or in a meeting or something, I say something to someone, they're like, "All right, so what's the next step?" So just something for myself or that we can give to our colleagues as well as our constituents.
So if I understand correctly, Mr. Snow, your question was, do we know why those 810 were referred?
Yes.
Yes.
And what are we doing to lower that from now?
So from the point this data was established, we are looking at trends. As a part of our strategic plan, we have various work groups. This year, there was some restructuring of those work groups. So some of the questions that you've asked tonight, there are those that can answer it, but because we are now re-establishing new work groups, it makes it more difficult. But with, okay.
I would like to defer to, when we talk about suspension rates, Dr. Kerberg, if you'd like to jump in and talk about, I lead work group two, along with Mr. Corner and Dr. Sikora and Nancy Bond, and we're addressing- and Nancy Bond, and we're addressing those issues district-wide. If you'd like to talk a little bit about the multi-tiered systems of support that we're implementing district-wide to really help schools have tools and resources, to help kids that have those common issues, to ensure that they have strategies and relationships that are built to keep them in school. And that will address, Mr. Vargas, your question about what we're doing district-wide?
Yeah, I think everyone saw the report last time, that Cara Saldierna presented with Shuri Luwaru, and Mr. Corner was also in attendance. And we took some time talking about a district-wide tiered system of support for behavior. And that is moving forward. The national consultant is speaking in December to all principals. We'll be having applicants taken after that time for Phase 1 schools, and that'll start in January. And I can recap that more deeply, but you did just hear that report.
And I think suspensions, though, don't go against absences, correct? So I think that's, they may be, I mean, I think they're two separate things. We're dealing with...
But also in our work group two, we're looking at procedures as to how to identify kids that have high absenteeism, and what strategies are being put in place, whether it's a transportation issue, whether they've moved and they need support from the district to get placed into another school.
And that's my, that's what I'm trying to get, is what is the still reason for these, I mean, especially, I mean, after we drastically changed it over the last year, what is the reason for these 810? Is that something that we can't lower, or is that something that if we can work amongst our work groups, or with outside people, to try to figure out how to keep these kids back in the classroom?
Yes. And in addition to that, in the school stat process that we just conducted last week, with elementary schools and the executive directors worked with the research department to ensure that we have cohorts of schools going through that process. One of the action items that we looked at was attendance. And principals, obviously, they look at that data on a, we would think, a weekly basis. But they talked about why those specific kids were absent from school, and they were not tied to suspension rates. They were tied to other reasons. And then they work with their attendance teams, as well as support from Mr. Corner's department, to ensure what they need to do to get those children the support, to ensure that they're in school.
And let me just go to Mr. Evans, because Ms. Williams and I did have a chance to sit in on just a brief part of the last stat session, so.
Right. One of the things, and this is part of the strategic plan, it's separate from the conversation on the policy, so it's kind of a separate issue, but each school has a school improvement plan. And in the statting process, the schools actually report out, and there's a whole panel of folks where they talk about what their data is, what their goal is for the next year, and what specific strategies they're utilizing. We've talked about the statting process at the table before. It might be something we bring back later. It's a pretty intensive effort, where you really identify, what are those barriers that we're seeing? What are those things that might be causing an absence that's a continuing absence? And then what are some of the opportunities to improve it? And you know, what we're finding is, it's different things at different schools. Sometimes it's a mental health issue, which we've seen a rise in mental health issues, and we're continuing to work with some philanthropic groups to add schools to Project Harmony's Connection Program. Sometimes it's a transportation issue, sometimes it's something else. And that, that deep dive is what happens in the stat session. And then that becomes part of the school improvement plan, but also becomes part of the share-out, that then becomes part of that report card. So all of that's connected, but it's just not connected with Jerry's office. I mean, he's a part of reporting out on it, but each school has responsibility for it. And each school has to identify goals within it. So maybe that helps some.
Go ahead.
So each school also has an attendance team that was voted on by this committee. And at that attendance team, we break down what the law states, and the law wants to know, and there's a collaborative attendance improvement plan, that now the county attorneys, it has been created by the law, the law is expecting that to be done. But there is a form that was created with Tim Hamilton and the county attorneys last year, to be more concise for each individual kid. And so at the 10-day mark, when the attendance team sits down, and they look through this, okay, is it a mental health issue? Is there, like, an education need that's being missed, and that's why they're not coming to school? Is it a medical need? Is it transportation? Is it a slew of things? But it's broken down into, like, the seven or eight different pillars, to be able to specifically hone in on that specific need. And at the 10-day meeting, too, county attorneys aren't receiving referrals from kids that reach 20 days, if the school is showing everything that they're trying to do. And an expectation now is to have them refer to some sort of community resource, whether that's goals, or safe, or connections. It could be that they're already involved with the court, so parole officer, or a case manager. So that's the things that they want to see. What is the school doing, and what's going on, what is the school doing to help utilize community agencies, too, to help each individual kid that do reach that 20-day mark?
That's pretty good. But I just want to make sure that, I'm hearing it right, that doesn't, that's not that 810. That is what they're doing to make sure that kids, whether they have a mental issue, or a transportation issue, that is not the reason why they're being still referred. They're, they're being pointed into proper, or...
Correct.
Safety net groups to help them.
Correct. And that's at the 10-day mark. So we're trying to do everything we can to prevent these 20 days from happening. We don't want to write the county attorney referrals. We're working with the families, just trying to get them that help and support that they need prior to that referral being written.
Thank you.
Is that, okay.
That helps me a lot.
Mr. Vargas, did you have a question?
Yes. So to follow, Superintendent Evans, can, for the improvement, you said the school improvement plans that they're creating, right? Are the school improvement plans, so are they finished? Have they uploaded them to the websites yet?
I don't know if they're all finished. We just had some meetings to go over that data, that last week.
Yeah, it was, yes, they were actually due on the 25th of September. And so now we're going through a review process this month to go over those plans. And so we do that at the elementary level, directly in the buildings, with their building support team. And we discuss their plans, and see if they hit the criteria. And then at secondary, we do a group review here in the boardroom, where there's many eyes reviewing it. And then we give feedback to the building principals and staff.
And there's two levels that are loaded to the website. There's a more basic level that's kind of a generic, not as in-depth. And then we've got a more drill-down copy of the school improvement plan that's available also. Because I know sometimes people see the more basic one, that's easy to read, good for the public. And then we have a more detailed one that's also available later. So, and that's, that's important to note, too, because I think if you see the basic one, and say, this is all you're looking at? Oh, no. It's much bigger than that. And you've got to see the drill-down version to understand how those metrics are measured, and how those goals are identified and put into a document.
Yes, okay. That's helpful. Is there, for the improvement plans, does every school have to have a goal set for attendance intruency?
They have to, let me answer that broadly, and then more specifically. They have to have one goal set on an area that deals with school culture, school climate. Within that, we have a listing. So it has to be attendance intruacy, or it might be a school culture goal, based on their climate survey results, might be a discipline goal, based on their subgroup data. It has to be specific to that area, and we give them options. Because some schools might be at a high attendance rate, so therefore they wouldn't need that goal. But if they are a school with a poor attendance rate, and if they didn't put that in during the review process, we'd ask them, gee, your attendance isn't what it could be. You've got some really chronic students that miss frequently. Can we talk about that further? So they select the one, based on a short menu of options within that category. But then if they don't select ones that they have high needs of, we'd come back and talk with them further about that, to see if that could be identified.
Okay. I just, part of the reason is because of, you know, I'm looking at one for a high school, and I just want to make sure that for parents that are worried, or obviously we're talking about attendance rates, that they can look and see the new, or different, or continued strategy for how we're going to address it. And the ones I'm seeing right now is not detailed enough, and it's the more detailed version when you click deeper. It's not detailed enough, and that's part of the reason why I'm asking someone around what are our goals. So this gets to my second question. For, on our report card for strategic plan, that, that goal for what is the percentage of students who are absent 10 or more days? What's the percentage now, and what's the goal that your team is aiming for by the end of this year?
You know, Mr. Vargas?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Godding, if...
Well, I was just going to say, it's really not, that's not your department's role.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Can we?
So it's really the, I think it's really each school's responsibility.
And we'd be happy to have a presentation on, I think we're going to another direction than Jerry's team is here for tonight.